And if you don't want it developed, then fork up the money and make it open space. Yes, but they don't want to pay for it. They want somebody else to do it. They will pay for it, not us.
I like the look of you today.
Me too. I'm getting right in line there. Am I going to pay my taxes for me too?
We can do pure and Ernst Road at the same time.
But it'll be interesting to hear their perspective.
Do you have to come back in here? You approved them in October. I mean, we want them to come back a year later because they asked to come around October. So that's stealing.
I wonder if they'll be off topic about how they go about what's on their agenda instead of what we're here to talk about.
Just make sure there are complaints.
Great, so that should be careful.
Okay. Do we know if there is any?
She's here.
I had no warning.
Okay. She hasn't said anything.
No, I'm for Texas.
We've got a big girl seat. We've got a big girl seat.
Oh, I'm afraid to sit.
Who's nameplate is that? Pat has it down. She's got them out. She just put them down somewhere. Pat, her nameplate. Take Alan's, Zoe, give her her nameplate.
Oh.
Apparently. Alan coming?
I don't know.
That's O'Leary's here. That was last. Pat, Pat, we're going to adopt Hercules tonight, right? We're adopting Hercules tonight.
You are?
Yeah.
That resolution?
That should be, yeah. I did it the next day.
Did you?
Yeah. We have to adopt the resolution tonight.
One, I just need to tell you, did you get my email or my phone? Okay, good. I'm good. I just wanted to make sure.
It's not in their package?
You mean today?
No, last week, exactly. Okay.
It's got to be in their package. They need to look at it before it's done.
We didn't get it.
We do it to 16, next meeting is 16.
I did it the next day. I gave it to the next day.
Yeah, I saw it and I said it was great.
We could pass it around and have everybody look at it. I'd rather adopt it tonight and get it over.
You want to do that?
Want to carry that? You have it? We can get it. Where is it? Where is the resolution that I drafted? Is that, are you capable of getting that?
No, not with this mess. Why don't we just put it on? Yeah, I don't.
You still want to do it, Tom?
No, no.
You can't do it without them looking at it.
No, no, because if we do it in front of these young, you know.
Good evening. If we could all rise for the pledge allegiance. Mr. McEnon, if you could lead us.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. My name's Tom Thiem, the chairman of the planning board. Couple of ground rules tonight. We end at 11 o'clock to make sure that everybody gets a fair shot. Please come up, use the microphone at the podium, state your name, your address, and we'll give you five minutes. We'll let everybody try to rotate through to let everybody get a chance to speak. Any repetitive questions after a while, I'm going to ask. If we answered those, then it's a repetitive question. Everybody okay with the ground rules? All right. First of all, our business, roll call.
Mr. Bella.
Here.
Mr. Hudkavage.
Absent.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Limbo.
Here.
Mr. McEnon.
Ms. O'Leary.
Here.
Mr. Velosen.
Here.
Mr. Thye.
Here.
Mr. Rogoff.
Here.
Mr. Cornell.
Here.
Mr. Leoncavella.
Here.
Mr. Davis is excused. He's at the doctors. Memorialization of resolutions, we don't have any at this time. We have the acceptance of last month's mint in July 19 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We accept those minutes.
After reading them, is everybody, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on the minutes? If not, I'll take a motion to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Communications agenda? None. We're going to go into the 901 Ernst Road Realty Association, the Briarwood. If the attorney could come up, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the.
Pat? Microphone, sir? Hang on, we'll get one, we'll get one. That's okay.
That's better. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Saroville, the Borough Saroville Planning Board. My name is Jason Horlak from the law firm of Mashansky and Associates, represent Saroville Nursing. We are, we were, or are on the agenda tonight for an amendment to our final site plan approval that we obtained, I believe it was two years ago. We have made a request this morning after speaking to Mr. Rogoff and to Mr. Cornell to carry this meeting without, this hearing without further notice to a date in September. My request was for September 6th. I understand that the board is actually not going to be meeting that night. I guess the date is now September 20th? 20th, okay. We did submit our affidavit of service to the, to the board on, I believe it was July 25th, which indicated that we noticed tonight's meeting in the Home News Tribune on July 19th. And we sent out notices to all property owners within 200 feet of the property and to the appropriate governmental and utility companies on July 14th. So we do ask that the board accepts service tonight, I said, sorry, accepts jurisdiction tonight and then carries us to the September 20th meeting without further required notice.
All right, well, just for the record, yes, we did have a conversation today and our concern at the time was whether or not there was actually an application for a use variance filed before the zoning board. Apparently, we determined that's not so. However, we did determine that there is an appeal has been filed from the zoning officials determination that a use variance is required. Having said that, we're going to carry it until the 20th. That hearing is scheduled for the 22nd in August, so I'm going to ask you, as soon as that hearing is over, you contact me, let me know what the status of that is. Because if the use variance is required, then, you know, you're going to have to make a decision as to whether or not you can proceed before the zoning board and not apply for just a parking scenario here.
Of course. And just, and just for the record, the, the appeal that was filed before the zoning board was filed by my client's proposed tenant, another law firm, and a totally different entity has filed that appeal. We only learned, my office only learned about that appeal yesterday, so that's why the late request is coming in. So I do apologize for that, but I have spoken to Mr. Mashansky and he's informed me that they are on for August 22nd. So hopefully, by carrying this to September 20th, we'll know in plenty of time what happens there so we can make the proper requests here.
So if there's anybody in the public audience, it's here on the Saroville Nursing LLC case. That matter is going to be carried to September 20th at 7:30. You will not receive any new notice. Is there anybody here on that case? What do you hear?
And, and my letter today did say that we would obviously give the board whatever extension they need to September 7th. Obviously, we will carry that past the September 20th date as well. Pat, I don't know if you need that in writing, but I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, you're up. Ready? Okay. We're going to go into the, thank you for all coming. We've been working on this for over a year. I'm glad to see everybody here. This is the place you should have come a long time ago. Remember that we are all volunteers. We sit up here as volunteers. We expect a certain amount of courtesy and we will definitely give you that, all right? So if you let us go through what we've done and we'll, we'll go over what we've got, then we'll take any input that you have, and then we'll see where we go from there. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we're going to review.
Oh, one thing. If you could all turn your cell phones off, that'd help.
A document which is the Saroville Master Plan Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. That's part of the Borough Master Plan. There's been no housing plan for a while because it's been in litigation for a long time. Mr. Sax will give a little history of that if you're interested in it in a while, but we're, a long time is from the 80s, 1980s.
Ma'am, you can't talk until the public hearing, all right? Thank you.
I wasn't talking about the initial presentation of Mount Laurel. I was talking about the litigation to do something with it, either positive or negative or eliminated or not eliminated. Let's move on. First part of our, of the housing element is the housing element itself, which is an analysis of demographics, housing and employment characteristics. It's in the first part of, of this document, which will be available at some point once we adopt it.
Well, it's been available. It's, it's.
It's been available at, right, at the planning board secretary's office. So you can read that. There's a bunch of data in there in terms of population, in terms of what housing costs are, in terms of prices of single-family homes. So I'm not going to go over that unless there's somebody that wants me to go over it. What I want to talk about, though, is the next part, which is the, our affordable, from the fair share plan. As in every municipality in New Jersey, with the exception of a few big cities, everybody has an obligation for affordable housing in the state of New Jersey. Our obligation was initially 1,309 units for the years 2015 through 2025. We are now into 2017, obviously, so the 10-year term is obviously less. There was another part of the housing obligation with everything that went on with litigation. If you remember, Governor Christie wanted to eliminate COA. There was a number of Superior Court and Supreme Court cases about what to do with COA. They were not being the administrators for a long time that they should have been, and every number of years, there had to be new housing regulations. We went through a first round. We went through a second round. Both those rounds, the Borough was substantively certified for its housing plan. The third round went to court a number of times, and what happened was, a situation existed where we, we had 1,309 units as a couple of years ago. There was an investigation or a study done by one of the principals or one of the planners in, in Princeton, who's a PhD, and also the Fair Share Housing Center lent a hand as to coming up with all 500 and X number, 567 obligations for housing, which, you know, with the smaller towns was, you know, maybe 100, 50, 50 and, you know, 200. Our number was 1,309. Other numbers in Edison was much higher than that. Woodbridge, the numbers are all over the place. There were three components of this housing plan that we, we, we had to address, and we addressed them in this document. And the first one was present need, and our present need was 67 units. And that was established again by David Kinsey, who's a planner and a PhD, along with the Fair Share Housing Center. The next part was a, the 1987 to 1999 new construction obligation. Our obligation there was 267 units. Now, I'll just tell you, with what we did with the most recent housing plan, that housing obligation of 267 has been wiped out by credits that we got through the, the proposed housing plan we're going to talk about tonight. So that obligation is actually wiped out at this point. We have 67 units, which are rehab units. If you didn't know it, the Borough in the 1980s and the 1990s was especially active in rehabbing units. You could rehab a unit that was in distress or ready to fall down, rehab it and, and have it for affordable housing. They did that more than 120 times in, in the past couple of decades. So we will, we told the litigation, the judge, that we would continue to do that, and they agreed. So we will rehab 67 more units before 2025. As I said, the 261 is, was wiped out. The other, the last one is 1999 to 2025. Now, before, I was just mentioning 2015 to 2025. 1999 to 2025 includes something called the gap years when COA, Council on Affordable Housing, was doing the least it, it could to administrate housing in the state of New Jersey. So there was a Superior Court case that said either the towns would be responsible for those gap years from 1999 to 2015, or they would not be responsible. A number of planners who talked in Middlesex County, when we met Judge Wolfson, who was our judge for the initial litigation of this, this docket number, thought that we shouldn't be responsible for those gap years because we really didn't have an administrative component at the state level. But the judge, Wolfson, heard that case and cited that the gap years were required. We fortunately required ourselves to include the gap years because a number of the board members and I thought that we would probably, there was a good chance we might have to be responsible. So let's put it in now. Makes our number a little higher, but if, if, if the court found differently, we could reduce the number. So that, that's the way that, that went. So we started out with 1,309 units. Then we went to Judge Wolfson. We also had a court master who was a planner for most of the towns in Middlesex County. She's from Flemington. She's been a planner for over 40 years. She went over our numbers and we had a, with the attorney, we had a, a discussion. We also had, with the court, with the judge, then we had the, Mr. Sax, the attorney, talked to the judge. We then had the possibility of having inter, what's called in the court, and Mr. Sax can talk about it a little bit, intervenors. At that point, or very close after the discussion started, there were two interveners, or one, one intervener for two sites, which we'll talk about next. And that was Kaplan Companies, which is a developer in town of La Mer and a number of subdivisions in the Borough. He cited that he wanted two, two properties, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, called Kaplan, what we designate as Kaplan 1 and Kaplan 2. We'll talk where those are in a few minutes, but he wanted those. The judge entertained him as an, his company as an intervener. He was represented by an attorney from South Jersey, I believe it was Mr. Richard Hoff. And Mr. Richard Hoff told us what his client wanted and what he was willing to do and not do. So that's where we started some negotiations, and that number then got down. We negotiated a number with the judge, with the intervener, Michael Kaplan and Companies, and with another developer, but he was not an intervener in town or in, in an application. He bought some property and he brought it forward. We'll talk about that. See a number of people here from Melrose were talking about the National Lead Site, which is behind Casa Verde on Route 9, that you are concerned about. I, I recognize some people here from that one meeting at the council. So we'll talk about that in a minute. But those were the intervenors, so there were only a few. Other towns had a number of interveners. There's some towns that had nine or 10 interveners. You know, Woodbridge, for instance, had a number of interveners. Edison had a number of interveners. The one property that got us validation with the judge in the initial discussions was Luxury Point, which, before the litigation started, we, not the planning board, but the council and Luxury Point Redevelopment Group, negotiated with Fair Share Housing Center, which is a nonprofit that's in on every municipal, municipal case in the state as an amicus curioidi or friend of the court. And they were in on every application. They were, they negotiated without us with Luxury Point Redevelopers, and they negotiated for 300 affordable housing units. Suffice it to say, at the time when we started this whole process, there weren't many projects in Middlesex County that were producing a magnitude of 300 affordable housing units. So the judge thought that was, you know, beneficial and important for, for the Borough, and that was a large number of project. We have 2,000 units, and of course, the 15%, they would be rental units, would be 300. So let's talk about quickly, and then you can have any, any questions. I'll try to answer, and then Larry, had any legal questions or questions that you think are legal, you can ask Mr. Sax. Okay, so just to, to clarify everybody's information, the Fair Share Housing Plan talks about, right now, nine sites that are in the plan itself, all right? And the first one of those was one of the sites that were, the intervener was Kaplan Companies. That's Kaplan Site Number 1. If you know where his entrance is to his development there, and there's, it's across the street from where the memorial chimney is, Sarum Fisher Memorial Chimney, where there's a strip center, pizza place, you know, you know it, I think. 7-Eleven or something in there. Right across the street, there's, there's still a piece of property. It's approximately 12 and a half acres. It's two lots. And he proposes there 173 market rate units of inclusionary housing. An inclusionary project was a project in accordance with the regulations of COA, which are still in place. The regulate, COA is gone, but the regulations of COA, which are about probably four inches thick now, are still in play within Trenton and, you know, and New Jersey. And those are the one, those are the regulations we have to abide by. The, the number of units he proposed to do there as an intervener was 173 units, of which 26 units would be low and moderate income housing. So you'd have actually 100 and, you'd have 173 units, 26 affordable, low and moderate income, and 149 market units. I point that out because I'm going to add up those numbers in a little while and give you, give you a summation of what those numbers represent. So he did a conception plan. He did his homework. He looked at that. We talked about it, and, and there is a concept plan in the document that shows how they would do this. It's a concept plan. If this goes through, they would have to come to the planning board at some point for a site plan approval. Now, the site plan approval is very restrictive and involved in terms of providing engineering, which are, the board engineer would go through with, with CME, and a number of other things. And all that has to be laid out and reviewed by this board, all right? At that time, if, and there would be a public hearing, everybody would be noticed about it, so you could come and speak to that site, Kaplan Site Number 1. Kaplan Site Number 2 is the area, which is where the townhouse development is, behind Shoprite, and it's the other side of the road, which is North Ernst Road, which is made up of a couple of different properties or three properties, and, and he got, I believe, or we were told by his attorney, he got control of that. He had two properties. He got control of the third, making that property approximately 26 acres, which had some electrical poles going through it, railroad siding, and some wetlands. Originally, he was proposing in court 450 units there. We discussed it with his attorney and with the judge and reduced it to 300 units. That was the lowest number we could get there. So it would be 300 units of, of market rate housing, of which 15% would be affordable housing. That would be 45 units. So for that property, we would have 300 minus the 45, which would leave 255 market rate units. That breaks down, just in case you're interested, to 17 low-income affordable units, 22 moderate incomes, and six very low-income affordable units. The next one is behind Casa Verdes off of Route 9, Crown, Cross Avenue, if you know where Cross Avenue is, and it's the National Lead property. All right? That property is approximately 21.9 acres, almost 22 acres in size. A developer who's headed by a company called PRC bought that property or has it under contract, is our understanding. Originally, he was looking at 200 units. He reduced that voluntarily because he could not build 200 units there. Once he got into the design, he found that because of the slopes, because of the size of the property, it's a regular-sized lot. It's not irregular, but, and it has a couple of other properties in it, one of which is the Borough owns an acre in there, which is really just a long bowling alley lot, not used, not useful for anything. He proposed 163 at the latest negotiation, of which 25 would be affordable. So for him, we would have 163 minus 25, which would leave 138 market rate units, of which he said on one concept plan, he said they would all be two-bedroom. Later changed that offer and said they would be a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, and some three-bedrooms. So that's where we are with that one right now. The Luxury Point is 300 units, as I said, with, which, if you remember, when Luxury Point first started out and they got a general, what's called in the redevelopment area they're in, a, a general development plan. They got 2,000 units there as a mix to go with all the retail that was going to be there. There are some changes that are going to occur there, but they're still responsible for 300 affordable housing units there, which they are going to build at some point in time. I, I don't know when that will be. That may be later on, towards the end of the, of the period of 2025. Just as a side note, COA does not go away after 2025. It's anticipated that the next period of time will go in 10-year increments. It will be 2025 to 2035. There'll be an obligation for every town then. The next period will be 2035 to 2045. I hope I will be retired by that time, and there will be, if there is needed, another period after that, 2045 to 2055. So this does not go away. This is constitutional in terms of the rights of low and moderate income people to have proper housing, and that's the way the New Jersey Supreme Court saw it, and that's what they're, they're doing with it. So we're talking about immense time and, and time spent on litigation, and then on proposing, you know, to perpetuate this at least until we can see that there's no need for any more affordable housing. There may be an end to this, but nobody knows when it is. So the Luxury Point will provide 300 units. That will be broken down into a number of units. For instance, just to give you, again, a number. We were able, under the, the regulations, to use some of these units as credits. So we did that because by using these units for credits, which were 129, we got a better credit count than we would by not using it. So we got actually more bang for our buck in terms of what we have here. So now we're using only 100. So, now we're using only 171. The balance of the 300 is approximately 171. Sometimes these numbers will round off or round up or down, depending upon what they're for. If they're for affordable housing, they round up. So, it gives affordable housing a leg up. You get one more unit maybe out of, you know, you have a number like 163, 164. You round up to 165 if they're affordable units. If it's for market rate housing, you round down. So, 163 or 162 would be 160. So, the idea is to give more incentive to get affordable housing and to create, buy a unit or two, more affordable housing. And you take that across 567 towns, and it adds up. So, so we have those numbers, and as I said, the very low income level would be 22. Low income would be 64, and moderate income would be 85 units. And they have to be, and we don't know where they're going to be, but they have to be on the site and included in the rest of the housing of the 1,700 units that are going to go there. But as I said, that right now is being worked on. Next application or the next site is, it's called Chase Partners. It's on Route 35 by Old Spy Road. It's where, there are new townhouses that have gone up. I believe they're, they're built now, and I don't know if they're all occupied, but I believe maybe one building is occupied. Of the Chase Partners, when we did that, and they came for an approval, we discussed with them, and they came with an affordable housing number to build, which is 22. So, out of the 100 and, out of the 148, there's 148 units there. Out of that, they're building 22. That leaves 126 market rate units. So, they have, most of the building is done, as I said. That property is approximately 27.5 acres, about 28 acres, let's say. The next property is River Road Redevelopment Area, which is a redevelopment area that's been, had a redevelopment plan and area designation back in 2003. It's down off of, it's near the boat ramp. There's a pond, a large pond on the property. There are some wetlands in the property, more so than we, the developer originally thought about or knew. He wanted about 200 units at first, but because of the wetlands, the highest number of wetland acres were down to 160 units. And that, again, would be 15%. So, they're providing 24, at this particular time, 24 affordable units, which leaves 136 units of market rate housing. Now, if you take down those numbers and add up those, the remainder market rate units that I talked to you about in the past five minutes, if you add up those numbers, the number adds up to 2,502 units. That's the market rate units for those properties that I talked about. One of the facts I've heard at one of the council meetings is that the 785 units of our, which is our obligation for 2015 to 2025, requires with the inclusionary housing, which is a mix of inclusionary and market rate housing, is a ratio of seven to one. And you explain that by saying 785 units times seven would give you the maximum number of affordable, of not affordable, of market rate units. That's close to 5,500 units. That is not the case, because I'm just reading to you over one, two, three, four, five, six, six properties. The total market rate units exclusive of the affordable units is going to be 2,502. Now, we have some other units under the Savile Housing Authority, which we'll talk about in a minute, but that number is not accurate. It's, it's not right. We're looking at 2,502 units plus some others. So, and if you take a ratio of the 785, you come up with a ratio, and do the math, you come up with a ratio of 3.19 instead of seven, all right? Now, we have to add in a couple more units there, but it's way, it's going to be way under 3.5. So, it's half of what that fact was brought up at the council. It's not, it's not a fact. It's a, it's a misleading fact, or a false fact. So, and the number of units we'll have without the Luxury Point, if, and again, I like to separate that because that was initiated before the litigation. We were happy to have it because the litigation, it gave us some validity that we were producing right off the bat 300 affordable units. It gave us, you know, some validity with the judge, which was good to have. So, if we take out those units, we're only building with the ones we just talked about, 802 affordable units. Now, I'll go over a couple of other things here, but let me just talk about the last. There's, there's two other elements in here. One of the things we tried to get, a number of years ago, the Planning Board, I think it was 1909, 2009, 2010, we built or designed and zoned an overlay zone along Washington Road. When we had to get into this litigation, the overlay zone allowed accessory apartments to kind of generate more interest and more development potential with houses along Washington Road from Main Street intersection up, I believe it was to Pulaski or the next, the next street. And we were looking at that for these accessory apartments. In the regulations for COA, we could put accessory apartments and make them for affordable housing, for affordable units. So, a person who had a larger house that could be broken up a little bit to allow to build an accessory unit could make it an affordable accessory unit. And the regulations say you can build 10 of those in one area. So, if we have another area, we might be able to build another 10. But, so that's 10 units that we added to our list, all right, that we would get as a, as a credit. The last one is Savile Housing Authority. We had left over a number of units that we were trying to build or design zoning for 100% profit or 100% affordable housing through the borough, and it's either its lands or its housing authority. And, and we tried to do that, but we weren't all successful. But we added those into the mix, which was 111, which doesn't need a 15% set aside, let's say, if we built them through the borough. In fact, we're still working on something to try to, try to get that to work. But that number has to be involved too, the 111 or a 112, actually. So, if we add up all those numbers I just talked to you about, we come to a total unit of 434 units, all right? Then, we had, and this is something that, again, I think at council meetings weren't, wasn't explained properly. We didn't have time to explain it. But we can also, we also take credits from prior years. As back in the 1980s, we had, we got credits that we could carry over. And when we did that, and it was 154 credits for one of the properties on Washington Road, Lakeview Seniors. Initially, we got 198, and, but then the planner, the court master determined that there was a, an error, and we should have gotten 42 less. So, we wound up with 154 credits. So, to the 434 credits of those sites that were talked about just in the last couple of minutes, we add 154 to that. That gives us a total of 588 units. That is the number of units that we have to build from 2015 to 2025. If you took it over the, two years ago, if we were done with this, you would have spread that number over 10 years. Now, we're into 2017, so we have to spread it over eight years. So, that adds, breaks down to 52, 53. So, every year in this period of time to 2025, we have to build 52, 53 affordable housing units. But we're not done yet. There was also tax, not tax bonuses, but like tax, something like tax bonuses on the, on the IRS scales. It's rental bonuses. We could take, for the 785, we could take a percentage, which is a maximum percentage of 25% as a rental bonus, which is 197 units. When we add that into the 588, and 197, that is, comes up to a magic number of 785. And that's how we got. So, and out of that number, that number 197 and 154, if you add those up, that comes to 351. Those are credits that we didn't have. And if we don't successfully litigate this with the judge, he can take those credits away and give us a higher number even than we have now. So, right now, we're in a better position than we've been or will be if our number goes up substantially, and our number may go up from 785 to who knows exactly where, but it might be in a magnitude of something like 1,100 affordable housing units. That would change the face of the borough. Right now, I'm confident we're adding to the, the housing stock. It's new housing stock. We're providing affordable housing, but we're doing it in a responsible way. We separated it and developed it across, if you look at these sites on a map, they're all on the edges and at, on transit corridors mostly. Either county corridors like Ernst Road, or Route Nine, or Route 35. And there are a couple others. We have a couple of other property, one other property on Route 35 that wants to be in on the affordable housing development areas. We may be able to take some of those units and eliminate some other units. It's, it comes down just like your taxes. It's a numbers game to a great degree. So, if we can do that under the regulations that COA has, we can become more successful and maybe lower some numbers and still get some other numbers. This other property is on Route 35. The board has reviewed it, looked at it a little bit. It's in a place that, there's some residences around it, but they're all-time residences. And there's nothing really that's, that has a big negative. There are some wetlands on the property, but they can work around that and have access to Route 35. It wouldn't be, it would be similar to Luxury Point where they have access to Nine or the Parkway, and nobody knows that they're there. Proof in the pudding, I don't know how many thousands of 33-yard truckloads of material has been moved off the site because it was contaminated. Did you ever see one of those trucks? I, I, you never see those trucks. And that would be the same on 35. And they're talking in the magnitude of something like 40 or 40, 40, 40 to 44 market rate units, and they would produce 12 affordable housing units. So, we're looking into that. So, we have to change that yet, so, and that's what we're involved in. So, the numbers now are 785 is our total number. We have 351 credits, which leaves, from the 785, it's that number that I talked to you before, 434 that we have to build over the next eight years, let's say. Plus do something with another piece of property, which at one of the council meetings, Chairman of SARA got up and said, "We have a development in terms of the River Road redevelopment parcel we talked about. That redevelopers' contract has lapsed. We, SARA still owns the property." They discussed using the property for veterans' housing, which was one of the comments made by a number of the public a month ago or more. We're looking into that. If we can do something with SARA and get that to be veterans' housing instead of 160 units of market rate housing, that will change the number tremendously. And then there's a couple of other elements we're looking at with some of the other properties. We can, we can change that number for the better, probably, but we have to do this step first. The next step is that we have to pass two ordinances. We were supposed to pass four, but now Larry tells me, Mr. Sacks, the judge requires us to pass two, which is, one is the affordable housing, affordable housing ordinance, which is the ordinance that implements all the regulations that are necessary to go and do this affordable housing in the next eight years. The other ordinance is to, when we talked about a number of these properties, the zoning that exists now does not allow multifamily townhouses for adults. It'll, we allow in-town multifamily townhouses for senior housing, because that doesn't produce schoolchildren. But if we need, we need two sites. The Kaplan sites have to be developed for what we would call affordable housing multifamily dash one parcel. So, that would be, we have to change the ordinances to allow adult multifamily townhouses, so that we can get the combination of inclusionary and market rate in those two areas. If we don't do that, then we have to do it some, it has to be done somewhere else. So, we have to pass that tonight, and, which is called the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance for Multifamily, and the Affordable Housing Ordinance, which is the larger ordinance, which, just to give you a taste of what it is, it was in the summary in the notice. It says, "The proposed ordinance, Affordable Housing Ordinance, will frame the administrative mechanisms necessary to implement the Savile Housing Plan element and the Fair Share Plan adopted by the Planning Board. The house, the ordinance establishes conditions and goals for a realistic opportunity for construction of the borough's constitutional obligation to provide its fair share of affordable housing for households with low and moderate income as directed by the Superior Court of New Jersey." If you weren't aware of it, in March 2013, the Superior Court did the initial litigation after many litigations that said, "We're going back to where the courts make the decision for every municipality in New Jersey." And that's what's happened since that time and what's going on right now. There is still, there are many towns that have settled. There are many towns that are going through to get their final compliance document completed and approved by the judge. There are many towns left with many questions. So, this will, this will be around for the short-term future, for sure. The proposed ordinance will establish new definitions, which we've done, which we have to get from the COA regulations. Additionally, the proposed ordinance will list appropriate administrative items, such as the appointment of a municipal housing liaison, selection of administrative grant entity for affirmative action. We have to get an administrative agent that's going to take care of the marketing for these units. There's specific reasons or ways to do that. We don't pay for this service through this administrative agent. It will be paid for as part of the expense that the developer incurs with the housing that he includes in his market rate, with his market rate housing. So, there's affordability controls. There's affirmative marketing requirements. Occupancy standards have to be established for this. You can't have a two-bedroom that has eight people in it. So, buyer income eligibility, there's, there's controls to that. You know, you can't make an extreme amount of money and afford, and get one of these units. And there'll be maximum rent set, you know, that would have to be done for rentals. So, that is in this ordinance already. You might have seen it. There's been a number of them floating around. The, the other ordinance is the Inclusionary Multifamily Housing Ordinance. And right now, we're talking about Kaplan Site One, which is Camelot at Site Savile One, and Camelot at Savile Two, which is on Ernst Road. So, if you, once, if those are approved, then we will revise the zoning map, the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. And those areas, Kaplan One and Two, will change to affordable multifamily option number one. So, right now, that's, that's, in essence, what the plan talks about. So right now, that's, that's in essence what the plan talks about. We have a number of worksheets that we have. One is Appendix 3, which kind of goes over those numbers I talked about, gives the same numbers and gives a kind of an explanation, talks about the lot and blocks. I don't have those tonight. If there's a, based on, from the chairman and from the, from the attorney, if we can give those out at some point, I don't know if we can give them out yet because we technically are still in litigation, but we're having this public hearing so we can adopt something tonight and then go to the next step. So if you have any questions.
I think, I think at this point, we're going to hold on to questions. We're going to let Mr. Sax give us a brief. Well, there's, there's going to be a lot of questions, but let's, let's get all the information out there first, all right? Thank you very much. Mr. Sax, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Lawrence Sax.
Thank you.
Anyway, my name is Lawrence Sax. I am the special counsel for COA for the Borough of Serville. Let me make just a brief presentation about why we're here this evening, a little bit, a little bit of history about COA and a little bit of history about the litigation. I know as Mr. Leon Cavalo stated, COA and affordable housing has really been a major issue in New Jersey since 1975, when the New Jersey Supreme Court, based upon lawsuits that had been filed against many municipalities in New Jersey, determined that New Jersey was a state that was committing exclusionary zoning for affordable housing. This goes back to 1975. So as a result of that decision, which was the Mount Laurel decision, the Council on Affordable Housing was created and there was a state mandate going back to 1975 requiring every municipality in the state of New Jersey to provide affordable housing. And affordable housing runs the gamut from low income, moderate income, et cetera. And most municipalities have been complying with those COA regulations. And in fact, over the last 42 years, since, going back since 1975, the Council on Affordable Housing, which is, which was an administrative agency, would come out with numbers to determine whether or not the municipality was meeting its fair share of affordable housing. So there was a round one and Serville was substantively certified in round one. There was a round two, Serville was substantively certified in round two. And then there was a round three and Serville was also substantively certified for round three. I guess the, the triggering date of how everything became into chaos in the state of New Jersey dealing with affordable housing was a decision that was issued by the New Jersey Supreme Court back in March of 2015. And in March of 2015, the New Jersey Supreme Court decided that since COA was not, let me step back for a second. COA did not have a full complement of board members and that was as a result of politics that were occurring in the state. So COA in the early, from 2010 to 2015 was somewhat powerless to do any mandate with respect to affordable housing in New Jersey. So finally, in 2015, and was based upon a lawsuit filed by a group called the Fair Share Housing Council, petitioned the Supreme Court to take some action with respect to affordable housing. And the action essentially that the Supreme Court took in March of 2015 was basically to say, all right, COA no longer exists, which it really doesn't, and we're going to permit each county and one judge in each county to make a determination as to what the future affordable housing needs of every municipality would be. And that's what happened. So in March of 2015, Serville, along with, I would say, two-thirds of the municipalities in the state of New Jersey filed what were called declaratory judgments to protect, to protect their, to protect the third round substantive certification and also to prevent the municipality, and in our case, Serville, from being subject to lawsuits from developers, which are called builders remedy lawsuits, which would entitle developers to damages if we were not meeting our affordable obligation. But essentially what that did in March of 2015 was to revisit, and John said, I think there's 567 municipalities in New Jersey, he's correct. It, it gave a chance for every municipality to be subject now to court jurisdiction over whether or not their affordable housing was being satisfied. So that's where we are as of 2015. In 2015, I was authorized to file a lawsuit to protect the municipality so that we obviously would not be subject to any builders remedies lawsuits and to at least have some control over what our affordable housing obligation would be. Prior to that lawsuit, it was determined that Serville would have to come up with 1,309 affordable housing units. As a result of the filing of this lawsuit, there was one intervenor. That was the Kaplan Organization. And they filed a lawsuit to protect two sites, which Mr. Leon Cavalo has mentioned, one off of Main Street, one off of Ernston Road, Kaplan 1 and Kaplan 2. So they were intervenors in the lawsuit, their sites were protected. After the lawsuit was filed and after Kaplan filed its intervention, the judge in Middlesex County, Judge Wolfson, who has since retired, took the bull by the horns and appointed a special master, who was Elizabeth McKenzie, who was still the special master in this litigation. And over a period of time, I would say between the time the lawsuit was filed in July of 2015, ultimately, a court settlement was achieved. And that settlement, I believe, was reached on July 1st of 2016. And there was a preliminary hearing at that particular time. And subsequent to that July 1st hearing, preliminary hearing on the settlement, there was a settlement agreement that was executed by the municipality and by the Fair Share Housing Coalition and by the Kaplan Organization. So those are all public records and those records all contain the numbers that Mr. Leon Cavalo has just mentioned. All right, so why are we here this evening? And why are all, most of you here? Because some of you probably got a notice to appear this evening. Because one of the requirements of the settlement was that the municipality needed to amend its housing element and land use plan. And that's the document that Mr. Leon Cavalo just referred to and, and mentioned in depth. And secondly, that had to be on notice to anyone who was affected. And that's why anyone who was within 200 feet of any of these properties received a notice. I'm sure many of you did receive notices. I'm sure many of you are here because you're interested, but that's, that's why this hearing is, is being conducted this evening. As well, we have not had a final hearing as to this litigation. That will be scheduled at some point later in the fall. But there have been a number of conferences between, and now we have a new judge, by the way, it's Judge Arnold Natali is the judge who's handling this since Judge Wolfson retired. And at our last court appearance, which I believe was sometime in the middle of, early July, probably right after July 4th, Judge Natali issued an order requiring the Planning Board on this date to adopt the housing and housing element and fair share plan. And secondly, to recommend the ordinances which Mr. Leon Cavalo just mentioned to the Borough Council. And that is to occur on August 21st. All right, so that's why we're here this evening. We're here for this evening for a hearing on the Fair Share Housing Plan, on the Housing Element and Land Use Plan. And we're also here for a, a hearing as to a recommendation on the two Kaplan ordinances. And by the way, the court order that was issued in July references only those two ordinances, the Kaplan ordinances, which deal with the rezoning of, of those properties and also the, the Affordable Housing Ordinance. So I'm sure many of you have questions. I'll be glad to answer what I can from a legal standpoint. I'm sure Mr. Leon Cavalo can answer any questions regarding the planning aspects of it. I will state that the settlement is a fluid document. All right, Mr. Leon Cavalo mentioned that there's already been interest from another developer to participate in this plan. Now, we're not going to change the number of 785. That's, that's, that's capped. It's not going to get higher than 785. But there is the possibility and there is the, and it was something that was a creative portion of this settlement was to include some municipally-owned properties as part of that settlement, which would not be on a 15 or 20% ratio of affordable housing to total units. That would be 100%. So there has been interest from the Serville Housing Authority. There has been interest from the Serville Economic Redevelopment Authority to get involved. And there's been interest from another developer off, who owns some property off of Route 35 to be included in these plans. All right, so that's all I've got to say for now, but if anyone has any questions dealing with legal issues, I'll certainly be glad to answer them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sax, Mr. Leon Cavalo. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we open up to the public.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we open to public.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anybody from the public like to speak? If you could raise your hand before standing up, I'll call you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah, you're, you're the first one. So after that, now everybody knows. Your name and address, then take the mic, please.
My name is Margaret Turner. I live at 7 Thomas Avenue in the Melrose section. With all due respect to everyone here, I totally understand the need for low-income housing. I don't have a issue with that. But I live across from Oak Street where it's a lead-contaminated area that was told to us 15 years ago, it was not buildable. But what makes a difference from 15 years ago to today?
Well, first of all, I have no recollection of who told you it wasn't buildable. Somebody owns that property and they have a right to develop it.
No, 15 years ago, it said it was unbuildable.
Who said that? Your neighbor?
No, the town.
I, I can't verify that and I can tell you that somebody owns that property and they have a right to develop it.
Okay, but my concern is, build your 163 units on the property. I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I think it's unethical, immoral to build on this property with these people thinking it's a safe acreage.
Yeah, go ahead. Ma'am, with all due respect to your comments, any site that's subject to development would probably, would have to be remediated. If you had Joe Blow down the block that owned a lot that had, that was contaminated and wanted to put a house on it, and we know that that land is contaminated, before that house can be built, the land has to be remediated, soil has to be taken, it has to be disposed. Let me just finish. Let me just finish. So, so once that happens, the, the land has to be placed in a, in a position whereby it's no longer contaminated pursuant to DEP regulations. So in, in this case, if there were lead contaminants into, in the property, anybody that went, that came in to develop that as a condition of development, because it comes back to the planning board, we review the site plan, whatever it is, a subdivision, whatever, wherever it might be, as a condition of building those homes, they would have to remediate the property subject to DEP regulations. It happens all the time.
I know.
So no, no one, to, to answer your question, no one is going to be permitted to build a house, a home, a townhouse, an apartment on known contaminated property. That's not happening.
Then why are we doing it now?
We're not doing anything specific right now. If somebody goes and builds something on that site, the land has to be remediated. That means they take the lead out of the soil and make it good again, which means they could take the top 10 feet of the soil out, dispose of it and put brand-new top soil, whatever. However far they have to go down to achieve that purpose, they're going to have to do it. And those are all governed by DEP regulations.
Okay, but that's understandable. But once they disrupt that soil, doesn't it put something in my environment?
No, it's all.
Everybody in my neighborhood is under cancer and stuff. My husband.
Ma'am, any, any site, we have numerous contaminated sites in the state of New Jersey. They've been mediated, they've been fixed, they've been cleaned up. There's a process to do that. You don't just go in there and start digging up, you know, soil, you know, there are procedures that protect, you know, that from happening that you're concerned about.
But once you disrupt it, it happens.
That's about as best I can explain the situation to you. No one is going to build a home on a lead-contaminated site. That's the answer.
And again, I say to you, then why are we doing it?
Because there's a, the person that owns the piece of property has a right to do it. Just like national, why? Because that's the law. Because that's the law, ma'am. National lead was the same, same predicament and national lead has been remediated because there was a need and somebody decided they wanted to use that property. Does that mean it's viable? Is it going to happen? No. Okay? If you don't mind, I'll take the next question. Lady in the back.
You guys so many other places to build. What about where the cinema?
Thank you. Come on up.
Sorry, I lost my focus. In the comment here today, the fine woman.
Ma'am, ma'am, please. Ma'am, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She has the floor. Did she say that? Did she, did you, did you utter profanity?
Why are you talking so?
Because we're not going to permit that, ma'am. It's not right. Go ahead.
I didn't say a thing.
Ruth Ann Mahoney to Gerard Place in Portland.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know some of you have heard this before, but I'm back. I have black on because I'm sad for Serville. That's one thing. There's apartments in Serville that are still not rented and we're discussing building more. Camelots, I see signs all through Serville every day that they're not rented. Also, it's my understanding, Town Lake, where the Camelots are, Mr. Kaplan Builders said they would build affordable housing there and I'm told, they were told they didn't have to.
That's not true. He went to court and took us to court and sued us and won.
Okay, all right. I'm here to learn also, but that was one of my understandings. Also, I don't know if, can the infrastructure of Serville water sewers handle all of these new buildings? I'm not questioning so much the affordable housing as the rest of the building that the Planning Board has proposed.
Before anything is built, before anything comes, there's a site plan. That's all done at the time of it. So right now, we haven't had a problem with the infrastructure. We've had to reroute some water lines and we've gotten developers to do that. So there could be bypasses if one of the systems went down, but that's also part of the engineering when the site development comes before us.
So we're, we're sort of sure, but not completely. That's a maybe. Okay.
I'm not an engineer, ma'am.
I understand that. I understand that. The emergency services, police, fire and ambulance, adding all these human beings to this town is a strain. The police department now is questioning that they have enough police officers as we, as we stand here now. Our ambulance and fire services are unpaid, they're volunteer. They need to get to the site of the firehouse or first aid squad with the added traffic. Can they?
Unfortunately, ma'am, this board can't control that and we have no jurisdiction over that. So those, those questions can't be answered by us.
But I ask, I guess I'm stating that in a way that says, did this planning board think of that when they were planning this?
Ma'am, we looked at everything and we, we tried to do the best we can and distribute all of these properties throughout all of Serville so no one area would take the hit. But we can't deny an application that comes before the Planning Board because we don't have enough police or enough first aid.
What about the safety? I'm sorry, what about this?
Certainly, we can't, we cannot deny an application for the traffic. So everything that you asked, we can't fix.
So you're putting our safety before a builder?
No, no, I'm, I'm not.
I'm just, I'm not here to argue. What you told me.
That's the way you perceive it. You have to perceive the developer, the developer has rights too, ma'am. And we can only, we can only. And we can only, we can only do what we are jurisdictionally allowed to do.
Do they have more rights than we do?
No.
It seems so. Who's, it seems so. I'm questioning what...
Now, listen, the longer we, the longer we go through this clapping and everything, is the less time people are going to have to come up here. Okay, you have... Please don't talk out of turn. Please.
Let's be respectable.
Folks, folks, come on. These people up here are volunteers. They're going to do the best job that they can. You can talk when you come to the podium. We need to have some kind of decorum here, so that we can run this meeting. Otherwise, we'll be here another day. So, we're going to give everybody an opportunity to speak. Please don't speak out loud when you're not up at the podium. That's not helpful to us, and either is the clapping. Thank you.
Thank you. These are questions or thoughts that I have as a citizen, and I'm sure other people do too. It seems that one builder in particular builds wherever he so pleases, continually. His properties are not completely rented, and we're talking about building more. I happen to live off the, on, off of Ernston Road. So, my concern there is the three-hundred town, or apartments. We're involving schools, more traffic. We're talking maybe two cars for each apartment, at least. You're talking about property there that's prime, that needs to be rezoned. You're taking parkland from, from people. I don't know if all of this was considered when all of these things were planned. You have a terrible, terrible intersection at Ernston and North, at North Ernston and Washington Road. You have four schools, you have a large shop right, you have a new bank going in, you have a, a new nursery school going in, restaurants going in. Where's, where's, where's all the police and, and not just police, the fire, the ambulance? Our protection, our safety, is now compromised. Thank you.
Sir?
Please, please.
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 You're next. No, no, I'm after him. I'm sorry. You're next, after him.
Charlie Lukey, Melrose section of Saraville. Been a resident there on Oak Street for the last seventy-six years.
God bless you.
Okay. The properties that you people are talking about on the top of Oak Street, all right, did you just give it any thought? There's only one road in and one road out. The average in the borough of Saraville is two cars per unit. All right? One sixty-three times two is what? Three-hundred-and-twenty-six cars a day on Oak Street. Do you have the road in a condition to take that? No. You're lucky if you have an inch and a quarter of blacktop on the road surface on the top of Oak Street. How long is that road going to last? Hmm? That's only one road we're talking about. The other traffic will be on Energeski Drive, which is coming apart, on both sides of the bridge, right? Laurel Street is perking water up through the McAdam. That's going to have to be done. All right? Carney Road is in bad shape. All right? What other one? Farad Avenue is coming apart. Did you people give it any consideration of what it's going to cost the taxpayers of the town, if you allow this man to build there? Are you going to take and condemn Costa Verde, and take that down, so that you'll give him access to the highway? Did you people think about that? I wish you would do your homework, because it's going to be one hell of a mess over there. And, and how are you going to get these cars out on the highway, when the right lane is actually a lane for the exit down on Raritan Street? You say Cross Avenue, that exits out onto Raritan Street. That don't come out on the highway. So, did you people do any homework on this deal? Thank you.
Papodak, I live on, in Portland, Cheyenne Drive. You guys are caught between a rock and a hard place, I get it. I just have a quick question or two. Is there anything that compels developers to contribute to the school systems? Because I know right now that these schools are pretty tight, as it is, and when you're going to put all these new people in, it's going to really have a, a big impact on education in Saraville.
The only crack we get at that is when it's in a redevelopment area. If we can, if we, like down at the Point, we got them to pony up some, something, but other than that, we're at the Kaplan Properties or anything else of that, no, we don't have to, there's nothing that we have to do. No.
That's, that's unfortunate, because that's going to have a severe impact.
Yeah, but that, you have to understand, that's state statute. That's not us.
I, I understand that. And my next quick question is this, I understand that a developer has a right to develop, but property that's owned by Saraville, you have a choi, if I'm not, I might be incorrect, but you have a choice of making it affordable veterans or senior? I hope that you, is that true?
Maybe Larry.
I don't know.
Larry?
Maybe Larry can answer.
Municipal property owned by Saraville.
Yeah, you can take that.
Yes. The answer is yes. It could be a variety of those uses. It could be veterans, it could be seniors, obviously it could be families. And that's something that, there have been some serious discussions involving the Saraville Housing Authority and SARAH.
Okay. That was my, I wanted to make a statement about that. We live in a town...
And we get a better bang for our buck for that, but we have to, we have, it's, it's not an easy search. You have to go out and find somebody to do that?
I can imagine it's a tough road. I'm just thinking that in a town that has a higher, high school named Saraville War Memorial High School, Truman, Eisenhower, we have streets named after fallen veterans, I think that we would, it would be well-served if that property was veteran housing. And I know that veterans can bring student, you know, more students to the public, to the public schools, that's not a problem. But, I think that we have to continue to honor our veterans by doing whatever we can as a community to provide housing for them. You know, it is, they do a job for us, and why don't we, you know, reward them as best we can?
We're going to petition SARAH to look into that and try to get some grants, but, you know, to find a developer to do that, you know, that's like looking for hen's teeth too. But, I'm, I'm sure if SARAH, SARAH has been good at doing other things, I'm sure they can look into that and see what we can come up with.
Okay, thank you. That was my questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Jim Robinson, 11 Burrell Square. I understand, respect, and appreciate all the time, effort, and energy that the board puts into this. So, I thank you for that. I wanted to say this, I am not opposed to affordable housing. I don't have a problem with the seven-hundred-and-eighty-five number. That's the law. I respect that. I'm not opposed to forty-five units in my neighborhood, or ninety units in my neighborhood, or a hundred units in my neighborhood. I am opposed to three-hundred of any kind of units, when it is on land with a density of fourteen, or fifteen, or sixteen to the acre. When it's on land that has an active railroad site through it, when it's on land that has high-tension wires, when some of it is on land that is on the town's open space acquisition list, that is zone prime, and that is adjacent to Kennedy Park, and has wetlands and wildlife in it. That's what I'm opposed to. And I specifically have some questions about Camelot Two site, the North Ernston Road site. That number of three-hundred, you indicated, somebody indicated that Mr. Hoff requested four-fifty, and then it came down to three-hundred. How was that done? How was that number chosen? Is that what he wanted? Is that what was negotiated?
Yeah, Jim, I can answer that.
Okay.
As I stated, Kaplan was an intervenor, so they protected those two sites. As part of the discussions that involved Judge Wolfson, and particularly Ms. McKenzie, because she was involved in all aspects of negotiating the settlement on behalf of the municipality, and on behalf of Fair Share, and on behalf of Kaplan, their original plan was to come in with four-hundred-and-fifty units total. They came in with a...
I understand that.
Yeah, they came in with a concept plan, and obviously, we did not believe that was something that was going to work at all, and it would have yielded a much higher density. And as a result of discussions with Ms. McKenzie, discussions with Mr. Leon Cavelllo, myself, and with Fair Share Housing, they came in with a much, they came in with a plan that was, you know, obviously, a third, a third less of what they were originally proposing. So, that was part, it was a negotiation, it was part of the discussions.
So, we agreed to that, basically.
We agreed to it, however, we agreed to it with the, with the consent of Judge Wolfson, and with the consent and recommendation and support of Ms. McKenzie.
Well, respectfully, that's a little misleading, because I've attended those hearings, I've spoken to the judge, I've spoken to Betsy McKenzie. They haven't imposed anything. They've said, what you two folks have agreed to is okay. So, they haven't imposed it.
They haven't imposed it, Jimmy, but they were part of the process to get us to that point.
I understand.
And they led us to that point.
But, all they said is, after you agreed, meaning whoever agreed for the borough, and Kaplan, or Hoff, whatever number they came to, the judge said, okay, that number's fine. So, and the judge was, he, he only made two impositions, and it was one that we do this, and one we do something on August twenty-first.
That was Judge Natali. We're going back now to Judge Wolfson when the case was settled.
Okay. But, he didn't, he didn't say the number has to be three-hundred. He didn't say you need this particular area, which has environmental constraints, which is near Kennedy Park, which is zoned prime, not residential, prime, public recreational, institutional, municipal, and educational, which was always meant to be an adjunct to the park. And in fact, as I said, there is money for it to be purchased by the town, it's on the town's open space inventory. And that, that's the plan. But, the judge didn't say you had to do that. We agreed to that density, the highest density in the town. And even if this ordinance is implemented, this will be the highest density in the town. And I do appreciate, at some of the, I've been coming to the council meetings since I found out about this in January, I talked about some bulk standards, and I think you, you increased the bulk standards, so that they are almost as high as they are in the rest of the town, to be almost consistent with Camelot One, which is down the street. And I appreciate that. However, and so that folks know what bulk standards are, it means height, and setback, and things like that. However, that property, which is across from a water tower, not a, everybody calls it a smokestack or chimney, it's a water tower, or was a water tower, that's open land, that's vacant land. The place where you need setbacks, the place where you need to preserve things, is where you have high-tension wires, and where you have railroad tracks, and where you have wooded areas. And so, I would, I would suggest respectfully that they all be the same, and you use the higher standard, the standard that is at Camelot One. So, I would respectfully suggest that you do that. The other thing I want to say is, two of the parcels that have been spoken about the most, and there are a lot of folks from Melrose here, but there are also a lot of folks from Sarabriuk, and Reflections, and Jackson Avenue, and Patriot Hills. I think Mr. Leon Cavelllo is not aware of that, but they, they are here, and a lot have spoken, and they've come to other meetings as well. Those two parcels are the heaviest wooded parcels in the town. They are the most forested parcels in the town. And to develop it with the highest density in the town, just doesn't make sense from an environmental standpoint, or a planning standpoint. Now, one of the folks that sought to be an intervenor in the case was Peter Mako, who has a hundred, is it a hundred acres? Hundred-point-seven, a hundred-and-one acres, something like that? Mr. Cornell? Hundred acres?
Correct.
Got about a hundred acres on Main Street. That is a sandpit. That is denuded. There's not a tree there, there's not a shrub there, maybe some worms living there, but no wildlife living there. And I looked at the, somehow I got the closed session minutes of the planning board, and the board objected to his being an intervener, because at the time, that property was not zoned residential. And that was in litigation, as you know. The town unfortunately lost that case on procedural grounds, and it now is zoned residential.
Correct.
So, that Mako piece is not on this list. I'm wondering why it isn't there? Is he going to be off the hook with respect to affordable housing?
Well, first of all, the, you're correct, and I did not, I wasn't involved in the litigation involving Mako, that was involving another law firm, and it's been going on for a number of years, but it was...
It was, I just read all these cases in my spare time.
Right. But, in any event, yes, it was, it did, the decision was not favorable to the municipality on procedural grounds, but procedural grounds are not necessarily the grounds that will ultimately decide the case. It would be the substantive grounds of that litigation. And my understanding is that there probably will be further litigation involving that. I don't know if there's been a decision made, but it's likely there could be. And secondly, Judge Wolfson denied the request of Mako to intervene.
At the borough's request.
No, no, that's not true, Mr. Robinson, not at the borough's request. They, he was out of time. There was a certain deadline that was imposed by the New Jersey Supreme Court in the March 2015 decision, and unfortunately, Mr. Mako slept on his rights.
You're, you're not saying that the borough didn't ask that he not be allowed to be an intervenor? You're not saying that, right?
No. What I'm saying is that the decision was made by Judge...
There were a couple reasons, that's right.
Yeah, but, but...
And, and the borough objected to his being an intervenor, and he was not. But, what I'm saying is, that denuded property, that sandpit, should be a part of this. Because if that is, and let me just tell you this, coming here, I think I counted nine lights on our little Main Street, and they're scheduled to be, I'm sorry, eight lights on our little Main Street. There's scheduled to be a, a ninth light in front of the Mako property.
Maybe two.
Maybe two. So, that'll bring us up to ten or eleven, and if you do this, three-hundred units at Ernston Road, you'll probably have an eleventh or twelfth. That just doesn't make good sense. There are other people that can talk about traffic. I don't want to take, I don't want to take time talking about that, but I think that's something, that's something that you, you have to pay attention to. And I, respectfully, I do, I do have to disagree on the Camelot, or Town Lake, or Heritage, or whatever it was called, that suit from two-oh-seven, two thousand and seven. I read that as well. And that was on, not on affordable housing. That was on age restriction.
Right.
And unfortunately, we lost that case too.
Well, that was done by state statute. Legislatively, that was done.
I, I understand, there was legislation, and because of that legislation, he came in and asked to be covered under that. And under that legislation, he was required to do not fifteen percent, but twenty percent affordable housing, which the borough didn't make him do. I'm not real good at math, but that's a hundred-and-eighty-four units, and twenty percent would have been thirty-six. And based on the formula, if you take those one-for-one things out of the formula that Mr. Leon Cavelllo talked about, you're not seven to one. But, if you're not talking about those, and we wouldn't here, if he had to do thirty-six units of affordable housing, that would be two-hundred-and-fifty market rate units that we wouldn't have to build. And I think what everybody in this room is concerned about is not the affordable housing. That's the law of the land, that's the appropriate thing to do. It's the market rate. It's the fact that while we call this affordable housing to help people who are less fortunate, who need, who need these things, what this is really doing is helping rich builders get richer. And that's what, that's what people have an objection to. And also, also respectfully, Mr. Ty, you said to my friend, Mrs. Mahoney, who's been here a few times, you can't take traffic into consideration during an application. That is absolutely true. I sat in that chair, I know a little bit about land use law. The time when you do take traffic into consideration, though, is when you are rezoning, and that is what you are doing now. Now is when you are supposed to take those things into... Now is when you are supposed to take those things into consideration. I'm not going to talk about traffic because I'm, or kids in schools, or emergency services. I'm sure everybody else will. But I would ask you to take that into account. I'm going to wrap up. I'm going to be respectful of everybody's time. I appreciate very much that the council, the housing authority, and Sarah have taken very seriously the suggestions. I gave a whole list. I gave a pamphlet of, of much better things to do, the senior housing, the veterans' housing, the assisted living, the housing for victims of domestic violence, people who age out of institutional care, things like that. I appreciate that they are doing that. I strongly, I strongly recommend, and I looked in the file, Pat showed me the file, there were letters from the housing authority wanting to develop some more things in conjunction with the planning board. I strongly suggest that instead of issuing an invitation to them, you sit down, you have a meeting with Sarah, and you sit down, you have a meeting with the housing authority. And everybody work together on this. And if you look at the state guidelines, as a matter of fact, they suggest that exact thing, that this plan, that this housing element be conceived in conjunction with agencies such as the housing authority and the redevelopment agency. That hasn't been done. And for every one of the units that they can find money for, and I think the letter that Pat showed me, there was somebody who had funding for one of these sites, for every one of those units that they can find funding for, that is seven units of affordable housing, and the kids that go along with it, and the traffic that goes along with it, that don't or doesn't have to be built. And that's what people are concerned about, the affordable housing. We're not concerned about the fact that you, we have to build these. We're concerned about the avenue that the board took to get to that point. We have to do the 785. That's the law. The Supreme Court said we have to do that. We shouldn't have to do the four, five, six, or seven, times that in market rate units to get to that. That's what people are concerned about. That's number one. And number two, there are better areas to do this, where you don't have to do a dense, where you don't have to do it in congested areas, and you don't have to do the density that is proposed here, the highest density in the town. In some cases, by, by a ratio of three or four. That's just too much. It's just too much. And I would respectfully suggest that if you are going to do this, that you bifurcate, you, you do not rezone the area that is prime. That should stay prime. And I'm not even sure, I looked at the, I don't think you changed the, are you changing the land use element of the master plan at this hearing, Mr. Leon Cavella? Or just the housing element?
No, we're changing the housing element right now.
Okay. So I, I think technically, you, maybe you can't even do that until you do the land use element. There would, you know, that, that was an issue in the Mako case, as you recall.
We have some litigation directives, so you've asked.
Okay. And we have a directive from the judge, so.
Yeah, but, but the judge didn't say violate the law to do this.
No, the judge, no, you're right.
I mean, there's a statute that says, in order to do these things, you have to do A, B, C, and D.
Correct.
And in fact.
That's why we're here this evening.
We just went through this, you know, the Mako case that the town lost cost $1.4 million, and it was lost, we shouldn't have lost it, it was lost on procedural grounds. One of them was the conduct of the public hearing, and the other had to do with the adoption of the elements in the, in the master plan that we didn't, so I want to make sure.
It's on the agenda, on my agenda to do it. But I'm just following our directives.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. I really hope that you would, instead of issuing invitations, because they did the same thing at a council meeting, have the chairman get together and, and talk about what we can do to have Sarah and the housing authority work with the planning board. They've worked on other projects. I can't think of another project as, as important to the future of the borough as this. And this has gone on since 2015, at least those are the records I saw. I guess to some of you, it appears that I've gone on since 2015. So I will sit down, but I would, I would request that you sit down with them and work out something so that you can do something that is better than all of these affordable housing units. I thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Jimmy. The housing authority has been here. They've been very vague. They looked at a piece of property up near Oak, on Ernston Road, up near the water tower, and all of Oak Tree West came out. They, they, they wanted to put it in your neighborhood, not in their neighborhood.
That was then.
You know, so, um.
That was then. That was before this decision.
Well, you know, but they, they came and they told us they wanted us to help them. They wanted us to find them financing. They wanted us to help them get a developer.
I understand that. But at the time, the borough was not under a mandate to do X amount of affordable housing units if we didn't do that number of senior housing or whatever, I think it was senior housing.
They weren't quite sure what they wanted to do.
Yeah. But, and, and I will tell you this.
We have, we have asked, Jimmy.
They had funding for it, and the town scored very high with respect to that.
Well, if they had funding for it, they never came and showed us.
Okay. So I would ask that you all work together and try and resolve this in a way that doesn't result in an outrageous amount of market rate units. Thank you.
I'm Ken Olsheski, 108 North Edwards Street. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm also vice chairman of the Servile Housing Authority. Approximately two years ago, the Servile Housing Authority made a presentation to the governing body regarding a building on Ernston Road near the mini mall. Now, we had worked with a developer, an experienced developer, and we presented this project to the governing body. The borough owns the property. It's three and a half acres. The only thing that the borough would have had to contribute is those three and a half acres. We had this scored by some professionals. We were looking for 9% tax credits. Now, there are two forms of tax credits. There's 9%, which are highly competitive, and there's 4%, which are pretty easy to come by. I don't want to get into the details of this. However, the 9% tax credits, there's generally a three-to-one ratio of people looking to ascertain that, which basically, what those tax credits do, well, they're granted to the, to the developer, and they sell them to a financial institution, and it gives a lot of seed money, and not only seed money, it gives substantial money toward the project. Now, why did we use the Ernston Road site? Because we looked at all borough vacant property, and the Ernston Road site scored the best. They look at things like access to transportation, access to medical, access to food, et cetera, and it scored the best. And, and the feeling was that it had an excellent chance of being approved for the 9% tax credits. It had to go and, and meet a deadline to apply for them. Of course, that was two years ago. Nothing happened. The borough, as a matter of fact, to quote the mayor, he said, "We wouldn't be able to do anything on this until the outcome of the COA issue." That's what happened at the time. So that's the facts. I didn't present it, but our executive director presented it, and our chairman, Mr. Gonzalez, and I sat right here and heard the whole thing. So I want to clarify that. That would be an excellent opportunity. That would cost the borough no money. I think it was about 80 units. So pretty much of what Mr. Robinson said, and he did the math, it would preclude the necessity of a whole bunch of, of market units. So I just want to clarify that. One other thing before I sit down, I want to go back to the, I know it's discussed twice, but bear me out, Mr. Chairman, because I got a question on it. That's the Heritage at Town Lake. Young lady asked about it, and then Mr. Robinson presented it. And can you tell me what happened there, and, and for the people who, who don't know what this is? I think that's the last Kaplan project within what many people call the pit, which is a a.
Town Lake.
Two, yeah, a part of Town Lake, 200, it was originally 200 rental units, and I think the settlement was 184. Why is there no affordable housing there?
I believe at the time that there was no need for it. And, and there was.
Wow.
Oh, hear me out. Because they didn't, people didn't want the low-income housing at the time. They didn't want the, when, when, when the people in Town Lake.
Please.
Yes. The, the, you know, just like the property that you spoke about up near the mini mall, the meeting after was just, the last time we had a crowd was like this, was after that meeting. Okay? The people from up there came down, they were all, all up in arms, the whole nine yards. I told them at that time, this was a concept that we had no plans before us, that this was before the mayor and council, and it was going to be looked at. And that's where it's been for two years. Okay? When, when that came apart at the time, the chairman and, and I guess the powers that be decided that they didn't want to take it. They didn't want to take the credits. Kenny, that's the best I can tell you.
That, that, that's not true. It was nixed by the fact, by no action on giving us the property. And no, nobody on the housing, the housing authority was not, they did not pull anything. They just couldn't pull a trigger because we didn't have the property.
Well, you can't blame us.
No, I'm not blaming you. I'm just stating, because the facts got a little mixed up when we talked, when Mr. Robinson came. I just wanted to make sure we laid the facts out and everybody knows. That would be a very viable option. There was no guarantee of the money, but we scored very high, and it's a good chance we would have gotten it. So that's where that ended. But I want to get back to, to this Heritage at Town Lake. I have, I have a newspaper article dated February 3, 2011, from the, from the Home News. And it says, "There'll be 184 market rate units." It's a legal settlement with Kaplan at Town Lake. Here's the interesting part of it. The 184 units, it says, "In early 2010, Kaplan applied to the planning board to have the age restrictions removed. This request came in response to a state law signed in 2009 that allows such conversions as long as none of the units have been sold, and the developer sets aside 20% of the units for affordable housing." So did we, did we ignore the law, break the law? Did the judge set aside the law? How in the world are those units of affordable housing not there? And now, now we all know what's happened. We're all sitting here, because now we're stuck making up, that's all built out, we can't go back and blame Kaplan. Now we're stuck and going to have to build all this market rate housing because the developer got away scot-free and, and took the profits and the money, and here we are now. It's a somebody done somebody wrong song, and I'd like to know who it is.
Well, with all due respect, and I'm sure Mr. Saxon backed me up on this, at the time, this goes back to 2011, and I, I obviously wasn't here. Excuse me? Excuse me, please? Please? You can't hear me. I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say that.
I, I was not here in 2011, but I can tell you this, I'm sure it was just, I, I'm sure that you were, sir. But Mr. Saxon backed me up on this. In 2011, the, the Mount Laurel litigation wasn't really progressing. It didn't happen until 2015. So probably the borough, probably the borough of Servile, like the other 500 and some odd municipalities in the state of New Jersey, were not setting aside affordable units because COA didn't issue any regulations with respect to them. So it's really not accurate to suggest that the planning board should have done that. There wasn't any, there weren't any rules. So most towns, probably like the borough of Servile, were not requiring affordable housing set-asides. That's why they got jammed up at that gap period. In that gap period between 1999 and 2015, whatever it is, the majority, if not all of municipalities in the state of New Jersey were not, they had no regulations, they didn't know what to set aside. So they weren't. That's my explanation. So, and you know what? We cannot change that. That, that, that's what happened five, seven years ago. It can't be ameliorated now, and it's really not material to what we're, what the board is doing this evening.
I, I'm sorry. I think it's very material.
You could sit here, sir.
We're stuck now.
You could sit here and maybe we're stuck.
Kenny, you can talk about it all night long, but we can't change it.
I have another question.
And I'll tell you what, the way, the way he explained it was exactly the way we voted on it, because at the time, nobody wanted low-income housing in those units. And we didn't have to take the credits. We didn't have, we didn't know if there was jurisdiction. Nobody was setting aside. So we took the, we took the information from our professionals and, and let the litigation go the way it went, Kenny. That's the way it is. That's the way it's going to stay.
Okay. Let me, let me just follow up on that, Chairman, if I may. I wrote down here that Mr. Saxon said, "Mount Laurel started in 1975, and then it was, it was replaced along the way." Now, in 2010, was there a law that said, "We don't have to consider affordable housing"? Was, was there some law that backed us up in not doing affordable housing? Or did we break this law that you said was in effect since 1975, Counselor?
Yeah. And I, I agree with Mr. Rogoff. You know, 2010, 2011, and I think I said in my preface to, you know, to my comments about the history of the litigation, COA was powerless at that particular time because Governor Christie refused to appoint a tie-breaking vote member to COA. So therefore, they couldn't issue any regulations at that particular point in time. So, yeah, I mean, I think the answer to your question is, in 2010 and 2011, you're dealing with a different landscape than you're looking at now.
Okay. I, I guess the last thing, my last comment is, I'd like to know from the 1975, when Mount Laurel took effect, what were the dates? Yeah, I don't know if you'll have this off the top of your head, but can somebody get for me the dates where we didn't have to comply with any of this?
No, actually, the town was required to comply from 1975 forward. There was a Mount Laurel I decision in 1975. There was a Mount Laurel II decision in 1983. There's always been a requirement to provide affordable housing.
That's my point.
All right? But, you know, there was a time period, and it was really that gap period where, because of politics in the state and because of the fact that you didn't have that tie-breaking vote on COA, there were only four members, two from each party. Governor Christie refused to appoint that final member, and that's what resulted in this litigation from Fair Share Housing, which resulted in that March of 2015 Supreme Court decision.
What you're saying then is that we could just ignore any COA regulations over that period of time.
Excuse me, sir. Let me just chime in. As I said before, in 1999, COA failed to adopt any regulations for towns to follow. We didn't know, the borough didn't know, Manasquan didn't know, Woodbridge didn't know, Metatchin didn't know. And it's in, it's actually in Judge Wolfson's opinion. He says, "But COA never adopted any regulations after 1999." That's why the court took over the affordable housing obligation that COA was supposed to do and did not do. So the towns had no direction. They didn't have anything to comply with. So when you say the law was there, yes, the Mount Laurel decision was there in 1975, but the Supreme Court created COA, or COA was created by statute, actually. COA was to administer the affordable housing obligations of municipalities, failed to do it. That's why ultimately, in 2015, when the builders got back into court again, and the court said, "COA's done. We are now going to take over the affordable housing obligation that every municipality has a constitutional duty to provide, and we're going to split it up county by county." So, and for example, in Melrose County, it was Judge Wolfson. He was the, the lead judge handling all the affordable housing. In every single county, there's a different judge. And so that's where they were, towns, municipalities were required to file these declaratory judgment cases and deal, the courts are now going to be dealing with affordable housing. What does that mean? That means if you don't want to make a deal, and I would say, from my experience, 90 or more percent of the towns have made similar deals like the borough was, because the consequences of failing to do so. the borough was, because the consequences of failing to do so may result in not 785 units of affordable housing, low and moderate. It could be back to the 1,300 or so that they were talking about that they wanted. Well, who knows, even more. If you sit, if you sit the fair housing people here, they want 1,500 units. So this, I know everybody doesn't like it. I, I get that. We get that. But the final analysis is, is that when that person's sitting between a rock and a hard place, it's kind of true. In that, for all of those years, there were no regulations. So towns just didn't do anything. And we were no exception. And so, here's where we are. So to go back to 2011 and say, "Why didn't we set aside 20%?" Well, I just explained that to you.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
And that's not going to be helpful for us anyway, because we got to do what we have to do. And, and the rest of it is not that great.
And I feel like everyone else that came to the microphone, and nobody is against affordable housing.
I understand.
That's the law of the land. We can't be against it. What we're against is the fact that these developers got away scot-free, did the building, took the money, ran, and now we're stuck with the problem.
I understand.
Thank, thank the legislature for that, because the legislation was the ones that did it, Kenny. You know, I mean, we sat, we sat here and tried to do our best, and the rug was pulled, the rug was pulled out right from underneath our feet.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one, I just want to add one more.
Go ahead.
One comment, just to follow up on Mr. Rogoff. Actually, every town in Middlesex County settled their case with the exception of one, which was South Brunswick.
Yeah.
They tried their case, and they got hammered.
They got slammed.
Yeah, they got, they got slammed. They, they, their number was probably close to 2,000 units.
God knows how much money they spent.
Right. And secondly, I know a member of the public, I forgot who it was, but said, you know, "Well, this is really a bonanza for the builders." There's no question it's a bonanza for the builders, because they seized on this decision in March of 2015 to intervene in, in just about every town that filed a lawsuit. So I agree, you know, we're not happy with the fact that we have to kowtow to developers, but that's essentially what the Supreme Court did. They gave the opportunity for builders to come back in on a depressed housing market to, to start building, so.
Ma'am, go ahead.
My name is Alice Carter Mead, 10 Gerard Place, Parlin. I understand all of that you're saying. It's, it's a point of trying to unbreak a glass, and we can't do it. But we don't have to reward them either. Kaplan seems to be the bad guy here, quite honestly.
They are, they are.
And we're rewarding them by taking away one of the only wooded areas that we have. Where is the wildlife that lives in that area supposed to go? Your backyard? Or is it just going to be killed off, and the garden state become the cement state? We already have a problem on Wa, on Washington Road. We have a very large temple there, that twice a year they have very big festivals, and it's impossible to come down as it is. It's a very densely populated area. And now you're talking about adding another 300 units. I don't care if the 300 units are all affordable housing. It shouldn't be there. We have areas in Saraville that can be developed without destroying one of the last natural resources that we have. Please consider that. Do not reward people that have had disregard for this community since their inception. They were supposed to put in affordable housing in Camelot areas. It's very minimal. You can't get in. They have areas that they're supposed to have already developed. They have not. Let them work with what they've got. Don't give them more areas to destroy. Thank you.
Sir, in the back.
Thomas Bishata, 17 Green Hill Avenue, Parlin. Mr. Robinson brought up a very important fact, and I'd like to go and expound upon this. This, I'm here because I'm not satisfied what's going to happen in this town, and all these people behind me are not satisfied either, all right, about overdevelopment. And that's one of the issues that I've always brought up to the council and everybody else. Why was, why weren't, excuse me, let me correct that, why weren't the housing authority, SARAH, and public input put into these meetings before we all had to come here tonight?
We've been having these meetings every other Thursday for the last two years, sir.
Okay, but let me, let me, let me refresh something here, or go over something. Mr. Grillo used to be your liaison, am I correct?
Yes, he was.
Okay, he told us at a council meeting that a lot of the decisions were made in executive decision, closed door, and the public didn't know about it. We found out about this only a few months ago, what was going to happen here. And that's why we're here tonight. Let me finish, please.
There was a lot of stuff that was done behind closed door, but that was all, only on everything that was in litigation, sir.
Well, this is going to be litigation also. This was a case that went on, okay? Let me continue on, please. How did you derive or arrive at this 15% that you have listed in this draft? How did that number come out? What was it, negotiated with Kaplan, or the builders? Who was it negotiating? The court set it? Because I think it's a little ridiculous, because if I was negotiating in, with these people, I would have asked for 25, 30% of it. Because if they're going to be rental units, which most of them are going to be, and are going to be affordable, they're going to get the money first of all from part from the tenant, and the rest is going to happen from the government. So, Section 8, so they're going to get their money, and they're going to get their 1,300 or 1,400 dollars of cost, according to the demographic study that you made. Okay? This, I don't understand, how you can negotiate such a low number.
The, the numbers of 15% for rental housing and 20% for, for sale or market rate housing comes from the COA regulations. And that's what we have to abide by with these, with this housing element of fair share plan.
Well, that's regulations, but you can still negotiate, can't you?
No, at a certain point, they wouldn't negotiate. Talk to Mr. Saxon.
Yeah, sir, no, the, these, these numbers are determined by COA regulation, by state statute. Those are the numbers. In fact, I think there was a discussion before about a bill in 2009 on a conversion, the conversion bill. That also had the exact same numbers. So these are numbers that municipalities and developers have been working with, you know, for the last 25 years, you know, even longer perhaps.
Well, Mr. Osheski brought up a very good point about the, what happened over here in San Fisher Clay Pit, let's be what it was, okay? Call it Town Lake. I, I grew up on Hillside Avenue, I, I watched that develop. And I watched where the steam shovel that wasn't there sunk into the ground. Let's be realistic, okay? I've been in town all my life. If you, if Kaplan got away without putting affordable housing in there, okay, the horse is out of the barn, can't you at least try to retrieve, retrieve that barn? The horse back into the barn?
No, you, it, it, no, you cannot, because the, the obligation is either 15%, if it's rental, or 20%. It would be a nice concept to go back to him and say, "Well, you didn't build it there, so now give us 30% or 40%." You can't do that.
Okay, two other things that I wanted to bring up. First of all, the property that's called on Cross Avenue, the National Lead property. A lot of people from Melrose are here because they don't want to see that property developed, and people have spoken about it. Also, in your draft, you have contamination. Also, I don't know if you're aware of it, over a period of time, there's been markers on that fence, quicksand, there were wells in there, there was a water tank. So not only remediation has to be done, if that property is used, which I hope it's not, because I've actually asked the council to go after that property with open space fund. But you, it's going to cost the town, like a lady just brought up here, woodlands, open space, that if it is remediated, let's remediate it for the people of Saraville, not so a builder can put 163 units on it. The last item I wanted to bring up is about South Brunswick. I don't know if you read the paper and read all the things that went on. The judge happened to work for a, a developer, and he, he made the decision, and then he went to work for the developer afterwards. Now, is this the same stuff that we're putting up with Middlesex County judge?
Yeah, but the higher court said that that wasn't so.
What do you mean, it's fake news on the newspaper?
I'm just telling you, I didn't decide it. I'm just telling you, I'm trying to respond to what you said. And the appellate courts have said, "There was no conflict. Whatever he decided was not tainted."
Yeah, but, okay.
I'm just, I'm not the appellate judge.
That's why Senator Bateman is going after legislation?
Not the Supreme Court, I'm telling you what the decision was.
I understand it. That's why Senator Bateman got his nose involved into this. Kip Bateman, who's a New Jersey state senator, is actually proposing laws of not allowing this ever to happen again. And I'm wondering, did this judge that made the decision here in Saraville, did he have an interest with the developers?
No.
You, you, you could just go to another county.
Now, I
Another county. Don't forget about Judge Wilson, forget about Middlesex County.
I'm worried about Saraville. I don't care about Newark. By the way
I'm addressing, sir, your issue.
Go ahead.
That there was some kind of bias or conflict, and the, the numbers were exorbitant because he's a builder-friendly guy. And if you went to another county, it's, it's, it's the same issues, the same numbers, they all think the same, same way. It's, that's, that's, that's the decision.
Well, my last thing that I wanted to say, Newark right now is going through a phase of redevelopment over there, where they want to put high rises in. And, and the people in Newark are angry about it also. Transparency is what we ask in this town, and I wish that we would see more of it. Thank you.
Ma'am, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Chandra Valde, and I live at 105 North Ernston Road. I don't envy anybody who needs affordable housing, and that's not what I'm here for. I, however, for the first time, you guys talk about this being something that was in the works for years. For the first time, I got a notice from this township earlier this year. This development is going to be in my backyard. And I've got my first notice from you guys about this earlier this year. So I just want to go on record as saying, "It ain't so. You were not notifying your constituents." And if, if you got, you guys talk about being volunteers up there, you volunteer your time. This is my first meeting in this township that I've attended. I would have much rather sat through a root canal. Because the attitude there is, "We volunteer our time. We don't want to hear from you. This decision has been made." That's all well and good. If you're a volunteer and you hate your job that much, let somebody else take your place.
Ma'am, go ahead. I don't see anybody leaving.
Ruth Ann Mahoney, 2 Gerard Place, Parlin. If you could just clarify for me, I just became a little bit confused. Who does the remediation of the property? The building or Saraville?
The builder.
The developer?
Yes. Ma'am?
I'm Janice Benedetto from 1 Thomas Avenue in the Melrose section. And I thank you for listening to me tonight, and I do appreciate your volunteer work. And I understand the need for affordable housing, and I'm not against it. I also have been volunteering my time, because I got notice when it was going to a vote for the four ordinances about May 27th, after the May 22nd meeting. Okay, now I got notice again for tonight's meeting. And we, as residents of Saraville and the Melrose section, as some people know, at the June 26th meeting, presented the town clerk and the town council with a petition looking for the Cross Avenue National Lead site not to be part of ordinance 366-17. And we want it to remain undeveloped as the Melrose nature preserve, and to be maintained permanently as open space. Now, at that meeting, and at the subsequent July 24th meeting, it was discussed. We learned that it's on the recommendation list of the open space committee. We learned that there's money in the budget to purchase it, to maintain our wildlife, our deer, our owls, our wild turkeys, and things of that sort. And we feel that while you might be under a court order for Kaplan properties, as far as them being an intervention, a part of the lawsuit, maybe the four properties need to be split up as separate ordinances. And they should be all voted on separately, because they all have their own issues, they all have their own pros and cons. There should be an ordinance for Kaplan I, a separate one for Kaplan II, a separate one for Cross Avenue National Lead, and a separate one for River Road. So we can look at them all independently. They shouldn't be lumped in altogether. And we, for giving up 22 acres worth of wildlife and trees, and you might have other options than using the Cross Avenue National Lead site. And everything should be looked at independently. The other thing is looking at your master plan, which you're going to be voting on later today. There's the conceptual site, conceptual site plan for National Lead. Okay, and I'm a bit confused, so I need to be educated. Are these townhouses for sale, or are these townhouses for rent? Because in the master plan, it talks about the 24 affordable units being for sale. And yet, it's 15% of the 163.
This is for the point?
No, this is for, this is for, this is for the property behind Casa Verde.
Right, Cross Avenue National Lead is what I'm questioning.
My recollection is that they were going to be for sale. I don't know if that's still the case.
Okay, because, you know, then it's a conflict in what we were notified and what you just does, talked about as far as COA regulations, that if it's for sale, it's 20%. Then 163 times 20, accounting is 32.6, which would round up to 33 affordable units. Okay, so I'm confused. I think the master plan has an error in it then, possibly. And maybe you can't approve it tonight.
Well, that's up to the board.
Well, that's mathematics. So, the other thing is, I agree with the previous speaker about proper notification. I really feel like, number one, I don't think protocol was followed with the ordinances going directly to the council, and not going through proper master plan and the housing elements, and then having a public hearing for the planning board like we're having tonight. Why is this happening after we did a petition with 480 signatures and we're still continuing? By the time this goes to vote for the council, we're still volunteering and getting signatures to fight the Cross Avenue National Lead site. Why didn't it follow proper legal procedures?
It did.
How?
You got official notice 10 days before the hearing. There's a zoning ordinance amendment.
Why did it go to the borough council for a final vote first? And we got it in the home news, we did all the petition, we did all this work, and now all of a sudden, they didn't vote on it that night. And now all of a sudden, we're here at a planning board hearing.
We can answer that, Larry.
Yeah, let me respond. All right. First of all, there was, there was a court order entered, I think it was July 6th, by Judge
Right, that was after the June 26th meeting, which we got notification around May 27th.
I, I didn't send out the notice, and I, that was done by the borough clerk. But the, the court order requires us to, requires this hearing to occur tonight. To deal, and by the way, you asked a question, you know, why, why don't we separate the ordinances?
Yes.
We are. We're not voting on a Cross Avenue ordinance tonight. We're voting on the Kaplan ordinances tonight.
That's not what was on the website. It was all done as one ordinance, 366-17, dealt with four sites.
And if, well, no, 360, if you look at 366-17
I didn't see anything modified, and we were on the computer this afternoon.
I'm not sure what you were looking at, but the ordinances that are before the council, before the planning board tonight, 366-17 deals only with Camelot I and Camelot II. Does not deal with Cross Avenue. So there's no, there's no rezoning or bulk standards for Cross Avenue contained in this ordinance.
All right, then 366, is it 366-17?
366-17B deals with the affordable housing ordinance, all right? And again, that deals with the overall scheme. That deals with, it does not deal specifically, though, with Cross Avenue. And the reason being, by the way, is there are questions about Cross Avenue, all right? They were raised at the last hearing, and that's why Cross Avenue is not part of discussion this evening, at least for a zoning ordinance.
Okay, when we attended the July 24th council meeting, they said they would Okay, when we attended the July 24th council meeting, they said they would put any revisions up on the website that the town clerk, Teresa, I'm not sure of her last name, it begins with an F, was going to put it up on the website. Okay, we even were checking the website as late as this afternoon. The ordinance 366-17, we printed it out, I personally checked it word for word, it was the same ordinance I've been looking at since May. So why were we not provided with a revised ordinance? If we're having a public hearing, we're not dealing with all the information that we need to, to be able to properly converse about the topic.
Well, you received, did you receive one of the 200-foot notices?
I am within 200 feet. I'm the only one on my side of the street that's within 200 feet.
All right, so the notice states that, and I'll just read it, "Hearing will be conducted before the Borough of Saraville Planning Board for consideration, approval, and referral to the Borough of Saraville Council of the proposed housing element and fair share plan dated May 28, 2016, last revised July 1, 2017, prepared by John Leon Cavalo. And ordinance 366-17 titled, 'An Ordinance Supplementing and Amending Article III of Chapter blah, 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 to permit inclusionary multifamily dwellings within the planned residential development district option in accordance and pursuant to a case management conference conducted before Judge Natale.'" And then it references the case. The ordinance which is going to be considered tonight is that particular ordinance, and that deals with Camelot 1 and Camelot 2.
So Cross Avenue and River Road were taken out of it.
Correct. And that was as per, let me just finish. That was as per court order at the request of the municipality.
All right, well, we were told that we were going to-
And let me, let me just go one-
-have it available to us, and it was not made available to us.
I'll read the rest of my notice. It also says, "Please take further notice that this application is on the board's calendar, and a public hearing has been scheduled for Wednesday, August 2, at which time you may appear either in person or by attorney and present any objection which you may have to the aforesaid plan and ordinances." And then it says, "Documents and any plans, if applicable, filed by the Borough are available for inspection during regular business hours at the Planning Board Office and Municipal Clerk."
Right, and the council president, Dan Buchanan, said it would be made available to us on the website, online, so we didn't have to take time off from work during the workday. And neighbors of mine have been emailing with the municipal clerk, Terry, I'm not sure, like I said her last name, the ordinance 366-17 was emailed to a neighbor within the 200 feet who also received that notification, and it was the same ordinance that we were, and we looked online this afternoon again, and it was exactly the same.
Then obviously, the municipality had the old ordinance, which had all of the properties. I'm assuming you would not want us to consider Cross Avenue to see?
Exactly. That's what I, why I was asking you to separate.
Correct.
I think they all should be looked at, for everybody's sake. Each property, to be fair, is an individual site with all of its ramifications to be looked at for pros and cons as to whether it should be voted on. I don't even think Kaplan 1 and Kaplan 2 should be voted on in the same ordinance.
Well, Kaplan 1 and 2 have to be voted on because there's a court order to do so. But there is no court order, as I stand here tonight, to vote on the Cross Avenue ordinance, to vote on the River Road redevelopment ordinance, to vote on any other ordinances. Okay?
All right, thank you very much, and I appreciate your answering my questions.
No, 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 you've been up.
And I appreciate your time.
You've been up. No, 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 wait, gentlemen. No, no, gentlemen, you're up. No, no, you've been up twice already. Ma'am, that's okay, sit down. Sir, you're up. Okay? We spoke about that in the beginning. Yes, we did. We said we were going to give everybody a shot before we let other people go.
I have something for March 1st.
That's all right. Let it wait.
Just for the record, actually Albert Garcia, Fort Craftshill and Patriot Hills. I found out about this, the vote here, I think like in March or something, and I didn't get a notice from you guys, I got a notice from, I think Jim, he had a guy on a copy of the map. And that meeting was tabled, and then they said nothing was going to go on because it was in trial, now we're here and you're voting on this now. So there's a lot of confusion tonight, and it's from the public and from members of the board as well. So I think if you're going to vote, I think you really need to take more time to look at the whole site, how you're voting on this thing, and how it's going to affect the town and everybody's safety. Because if you have, to get to this side of town, you have Washington Avenue, you have Main Street. Something happens, you have to close either those three, or the traffic goes through Ernston Road to get, you know, back to Washington or back to Main Street. If you have this housing in there, you already have enough going on to get the traffic. You just look at Saraville, they use Ernston Road, that traffic is backed up, and that's just for an event, that they, you know, they get the traffic there. So you know the issue with traffic and everything, but I think the board hasn't answered a lot of questions from the public. So I think they need to take more time to look at the plan and figure something out. And I don't think that what's being offered to the public now, I don't think it makes sense, a lot of the stuff. So, I mean, you got a lot of good suggestions today, so maybe you could go back and look things over. I know you have to comply with the order, but I think there's got to be something better that could be done.
All right. Thank you. Before we go on, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Hey, Larry? Larry?
Some of them don't.
But I got it on the record, and we're going in. And I tried not to win it, but I got a couple. Just one second. You want to talk to your mic?
I'll just leave my microphone.
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 I thought you had some good stuff.
Excellent job.
Did they listen? No.
But I got it on the record, and we're going in.
Yes.
And I tried not to win it, but I got a couple.
Just one second. You want to talk to your mic?
I'll just leave my microphone.
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 You're gonna sleep good tonight?
Can I mention something to you?
Go ahead. Yeah, what's that? What if I missed?
I don't think they're all gonna get here.
You know what I'm saying? You know, I played like shit today. I shot one hundred and one. I've never played that bad in fifteen years. We get the board back together? Yeah, I don't... I just lost Dennis, so as soon as I see Dennis, we're good. Oh, we miss it? Oh, yeah? The ordinance? Huh? You're gonna vote no?
This is the old ordinance. This is the old ordinance, because in this thing, three sixty-six dash seventeen is the Cross Avenue site.
John gave this to me tonight. He has a B next to it, but it was never... I don't think it ever went anywhere. John just... Can I raise that question for you?
So the wrong one is on there?
What do you think from what I have?
Well, I don't think anybody had that.
That's why I didn't have it. That's why I asked them.
Yeah, I... Same thing. I said, I don't think there's...
So can we vote on this?
Well, the public notice says ordinance three sixty-six dash seventeen. Doesn't say B. It doesn't say...
I think you maybe wanna talk to Larry and John and see where that came from.
Larry! Where'd John go?
He's talking about the Parkland Station or everything about the... Kaplan owns that property.
Oh, yeah?
So if he wants to build on it, he builds on it. Now, who sold that property to Kaplan? Is that borough loan property that Kaplan bought back in the day? Was it privately owned? Did somebody sold it to Kaplan?
So one of those trees, which is gone.
He has the right to develop under the current zoning, which is our tenth, or our seventh, so he can build seventy-five by on our lot. So it's a lot less intense, but still, he can go in and take all the trees down.
But Kaplan one is a B one zone, isn't it?
Kaplan one is a B one.
And two is our seven?
Two, the part of it is prime, the rest is residential.
But it's a PD... It's a PD ten.
PD seven, PD ten there.
I don't understand that. You know, he owns the property. What are you gonna do? That whole Camelot thing, I remember that meeting. That was age restricted. I go to no one converting that. Remember the guys came that Wiesnuski sent, and these ones sponsored the freaking register?
If we could start settling down... I have a couple more board members that have to come back, but if we could start settling down, we can... I need a planner yet?
It's a B seven. I don't really give any more than that's a... B one. B one. That little piece on nature is a B one.
He told me to bring her some ice. I thought they were kidding. I don't know.
Well, in most, we only have another hour in here. Hey, Mr. Chairman? I'm sure these two firm ordinances tonight, they're already midnight. Has it all worked out?
Interesting, huh, Pat?
Do we have to vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna vote on them and send it to the council. Let them decide. Let them be. This is our recommendation. After two years, this is our recommendation. Go to the mayor and council, and they get the vote on it, and they get the ramifications. All right, I'm waiting for one board member to come back and a planner. Somebody get a lifeguard. Huh? Okay. So it's seventeen B we're talking about?
No, it's not B. Don't even worry about that B. Do not even use the word B.
Three six three six.
That's the old.
Yes, John.
And we're all back. Anybody that hasn't talked, are you? You're next. And then you're next. Just in time reframe, it's ten... Nine fifty-five. We're done at eleven.
Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Your name and address, please?
Okay, my name is Sanjay Modi. I'm... My address is one forty-four Whitehead Avenue, which is Town Lake West.
Can you spell that for us, please?
Okay, S-A-N-J-A-Y. That's the first name, and last name is M-O-D-I.
Thank you.
Okay, my quick question is, I'm the board member of the Town Lake West, and we have a property along... All along this Kaplan property that you guys are talking about. And I, as a board member, we never been notified. So I want to know whether notice went to us or not.
I don't think Town Lake is... You wouldn't have received the notice in this case, because Town Lake is not part of any of these properties that are affected.
No, we are behind it.
Yeah, but if you're only... Well, again, only if you're within two hundred feet.
Yes, we are whole property, which is owned by open space by us, that we have to maintain as agreement with the township.
So the open space lot is the one that's...
Yes, all the lots are there, and we... I don't know whether we...
I'm sure the notice was sent out. The question is, who signed for it or who received it? I don't know. I can't answer that for you, sir.
Please, please, you can only speak if you're up here on the microphone.
Okay, these are all the... Okay, I'm sorry, but there... Whoever is facing the property, six houses, that they received the notice, but I'm talking about as association board member, we did not receive the notice for our land, which is open.
I have the tax... I have the two hundred foot list here. Actually, block one thirty-six, lot one hundred, is owned by Town Lake East Homeowners Association.
Yes.
They were on the list. Block one thirty-six point six.
Which address you serve, Sandy, sir?
I don't have addresses. I'm just giving you the block and lots. Also, there was another notice sent to block one thirty-six point sixteen, lot seventy-eight, also to Town Lake West Homeowners Association. By the way, the address that it's sent to is four dash zero eight Town Center Drive, North Brunswick, New Jersey.
This is not the...
Well, that's on the tax list, so...
I'm gonna make this easy. I'm gonna make this very easy. Case law says, even if you were supposed to get notice, you didn't get notice, but you're at the hearing?
Okay.
It's a non-issue.
Okay, I just want to... Because we... So, all right, so that's the other thing. That's the first thing. Now, my point, the second point is... Second point is, why we have to build this many houses in this lot? That's the first place. Kaplan suggested, and we are here rezoning, right? We are... This is... We are considering rezoning the lot.
I think it's Camelot one and two.
Yes, this is Camelot one.
You're talking about Camelot one?
Yes.
That was a court settlement. It was approved by the judge. It was negotiated between Kaplan, between the municipality, between the special master, Ms. McKenzie, who was appointed by the court.
Yeah, but so that means it's already done deal. So we don't have anything to say on this year here, because it was already court mandated, sir.
Well, the case was settled a year ago, okay? We're now at the point where we have to have a final hearing as to this particular settlement and as to the particulars of the fair share housing. And that's why we're here this evening.
Yes, so I'm... We are, as association, we are opposing that, all right? On the record, I want to say that. And that's it. That's why I'm here.
Go ahead. And then you, and then you. Okay, one, two, three. Okay.
My name is Jesus Santiago. I live at thirty-eight Wiesnuski. The reason, I guess, what he was trying to say was, when we did... We came into the community, we looked at the homes over there, and at no time did Kaplan say they were gonna build a low-income... They had a map of what we were purchasing, and homes over there between six hundred to eight, nine hundred thousand dollars. And at no time did he say, "We're gonna be building the low-income," or they told us at the beginning they were gonna have senior citizens home there. Then, none of us were notified they were gonna change that to what they have today, to Camelot. So the concern of all the homeowners in the area is that if they do build there, all the values of our homes are gonna go down. Not trying to say if it's gonna be crime. Traffic is a problem today. With speeding, with people coming out of Camelot, and people using it, going up and down. Sometimes we have, as homeowners, we'll put something for the kids to play, so that no one gets hit. But at no time were we notified that a low-income housing was gonna be built, and that's gonna... All the homeowners are worried about their homes and the decline of their property. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next.
Hey, good evening. My name is Shikumar. I live in one forty-seven Whitehead Avenue. I just want to second whatever the concerns others, because fed, like, schools are crowded and roads are congested. If you want to construct any affordable houses, why can't we move to a less crowded area instead of the what the plots which you are already considered right now? And also, I really don't want to eat around the bush. I just want to find out from you great people, like, what is that you guys want to hear from us, or what is that you guys want us to do so that we can stop any construction in that plotted area?
We don't do that.
That's not under our jurisdiction. We can't do that. That's not our function.
We can't tell you what... How to do that.
So is there some...
Come here, it's a public hearing. You come here and you give us your, you know, your opinions, your comments.
So what's the outcome of this? Like, you heard our concerns?
We don't know yet. We haven't voted.
Pardon?
We don't know yet. We haven't voted.
Okay.
We're gonna wait until the public hearing is completed, and then vote.
At the end of this meeting?
Yes.
Hopefully.
What? Please wait until you're up here, guys.
Okay.
Are you done? Thank you. Sir?
My name is Robert Cartahana, and I've been living here for thirty-three years. I'm an original owner... I'm sorry? The address is forty-eight Harshure Way, Parlin, New Jersey.
Thank you.
When I moved here thirty-three years ago with my family, the Kaplan organization said, "What you see across Ernston Road is never going to be developed. It's gonna be preserved. What you're going to see there is walkways, possibly in addition of a park." And so that made us do the final decision to move to Sayerville. And Ernston Road ended right by Harshure Way, but when they opened it and extended Ernston Road, it created a lot of traffic jams. As a matter of fact, at the very beginning, there were several accidents because of the curving roadway. And very often, you have cars that speed through Ernston Road and creating a danger to the residents there. And so I feel, as already has been said by everybody this evening, I think it's inappropriate. It's unsafe. And the thing that I would ask you is to implore you to understand all the concerns that the people behind us, behind me, have expressed this evening when you make a final decision. Presumably, none of you are going to be directly affected by this construction. So therefore, you probably... You probably will not be taken into consideration what we have expressed. So please, I'm gonna ask you to consider and to listen to what has been said this evening, and when you do a vote, to take into consideration what has been said. Okay?
Have you spoken before yet? You. You're up. Have you spoken?
She did. Okay.
My name is Pradeep Darya. I live in Town Lake One-Pit Terrace. First, I have a simple question that, in today's meeting, who is gonna vote for this? You guys gonna vote, or we gonna vote?
You don't... The planning board votes.
Planning board votes. Okay.
And let me... The planning board makes a recommendation to the council. The council votes on it. On the ordinances. Okay, we make a recommendation tonight on these two ordinances. They go to the council. The council can either accept them or reject them. Then, if they reject them, it goes to the court, and the court decides what they wanna do. So we hold our destiny now, but only lightly in our hands.
Okay, and second thing that, when you consider this, all these houses, it never occurred to you that you are considering in most dense area? That like here, Town Lake. As it is, it is a dense area. Hundred eighty-four apartment, total three hundred and fifty houses between two Town Lakes, and the schools are nearby, you know? And this is a real heavy traffic area, and there, how did you think that, okay, it is okay to approve the hundred seventy or whatever apartments they're gonna build? Is it because it doesn't affect you?
Mr. Chairman, let me... Maybe I can respond.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll bite my tongue.
Yeah. Maybe I didn't make myself clear at the beginning, but let me clarify, all right? The two Kaplan sites were protected sites by virtue of Kaplan filing an answer to the complaint to intervene in the lawsuit. So we had no control. It wasn't as if we sat in a back room and said, "Oh, these are two good sites that let's put market and affordable housing there." That is not what happened. It would have been everyone's preference not to have it. But unfortunately for the municipality, and fortunately for Kaplan, and in common with other builders throughout the state of New Jersey, if they filed an application to intervene in the COA litigation, they protected their sites. And that's why those sites are now part of this settlement. It was never... It's not something that the township would have said, "Yes, let's put housing over here." But by them intervening, by them taking advantage of that Supreme Court decision in March of 2015, they were able to protect these two sites.
So we don't... Just so you understand, the planning board is a referral agency with respect to proposed ordinances. We comment. The planning board comments to the Borough Council. We read the ordinance. We heard the public comment, and here's our comment, yea or nay. But ultimately, the power with respect to the ordinance, obviously, is with the Borough Council. The master plan and land use element, it's a different story. That's our bag.
Is there anybody that hasn't spoken that wishes to speak? Is there anybody that hasn't spoken? Go ahead, man.
Good evening. My name is Anna Marte. I live at fifty-eight Forenam Square in the Reflections Condominiums. And I just wanted to publicly voice my concern and my opposition to the Camelot two housing, because I am not opposed to affordable housing. I grew up in affordable housing in New York my entire life, so that is not my opposition. My concern is, I have a daughter who attends the middle school, who walks to school every day, because we are within less than two miles of the school, so she doesn't have busing to and from school. On a regular day, if she intends or stays after school for whatever reason, there are no crossing guards on Washington and Ernston Road. So my concern is the influx of, and the addition of, three hundred-plus cars onto Ernston Road, potentially putting the lives of the children who walk to or from school in danger, really. And that's where my opposition comes in, and that's my concern, and that's why I wanted to publicly voice my opposition to that development there in that area. Thank you.
Ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. Alice Carter, Ten Gerard Place, Parlin. My other concern, I spoke about the animals before. My other concern is the fact that there are high-power lines, high-tension lines at the North Ernston Road area. It's all right to be around high-tension lines for a short period of time, but they have been proven to cause cancer. Are you willing to take the responsibility of...
Ma'am, that's just not so.
Oh, yes, it is.
I'm sorry, but it's not.
It is dangerous to have...
And I can tell you this. It's outside our jurisdiction to determine whether or not radio frequency interference from cell towers or other transmission towers have any impact on what we do here, which is site plan subdivisions and things that were being referred to by the...
I understand that, but it is a danger. If you stand near a high-tension line, you do feel the buzz from them.
I understand. That's how you believe.
But can I finish, please? What I'm asking is, are you going to be removing those tension lines? Are you going to be relocating them? Or are we gonna be putting them underground, like in New York?
That won't be entertained, even if that were so, until an application comes before us to develop the property.
I understand that, but we're talking about taking areas away that are supposed to become parkland, and that was what we understood. That these are areas that, as I said, these are the only wildlife areas, really, that are left in Sayerville. Is it worth it for these few houses? I would love to have more affordable housing. I truly would. But there must be other areas that are more... That are more acceptable, not even acceptable, but better use of land. You can't... You cannot take trees down and then expect them or the animals there to just have no place to go, and you also have to think about the future. We build there now. Where next? Are we going to build in our backyard? We have too many houses here already in that area. It's so densely populated, and we only have that one little strip.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that hasn't spoken, sir? Have you spoken yet? All right, go ahead. Come on up.
Hi, Ron Mancini, nine Jackson Avenue. I'm a teacher in Sayerville Middle School, so I would like to...
Your address?
Nine Jackson Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
What was your last name? Mrs. Marte. I would like to back up what she said about the children's safety. Adding all of these cars and people and families into this area, which is already a high-traffic volume in the morning, going to school, is not good. You can't get down the road. I live on Jackson Avenue. It takes me fifteen minutes to get to the middle school in the morning. Adding more traffic to that is not gonna help anybody here. The kids that are walking to school, they've got people driving like maniacs bumper to bumper, trying to get by. There's so many other solutions. The amount of kids that are gonna be added into the schools is ridiculous. Come on. I've got twenty-seven, twenty-eight kids in a class. We gotta do something. There's other options. If you can do senior housing, if you can do veterans' housing. I mean, if there's other options right now, I don't think that we can vote yes when this many people, and half of them left, are against it. Because you're part of us, and all of us are not happy about this. There are empty buildings right now, right? The senior citizens' home isn't filled on Washington Road, so that could be filled as part of this. There's... Main Street's open.
Excuse me?
I support them. It's fine. They can more than chime in. It's great.
No, 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 they can't.
Let's get it straight. There's only one person that can talk from the public at a time, so we can hear what you're saying. And it's not a public thing. So when you speak, you're speaking, and that's it.
Okay, well...
It's the only way we can run this operation.
Right, right. But anyway, with the amount of people who are against this, to vote yes for this, it's not right. The schools are overcrowded as it is. We're adding more people to that. We're adding more traffic. I could tell you right now, in the morning, if something goes on and there's an accident, the cops can't get through. Not on Washington Road. There's no way. You're pulled over by where Kennedy Park is, where there's dirt. That's a lot to think about, and with this many people against this, I don't know how you could vote yes for it. That's what I have to say.
Is there anybody that hasn't spoken, ma'am? Come on up.
Monica Consiglio, seven James Street, Melrose. I know we're not discussing Melrose anymore, and you're not voting on it tonight, but I'd like to voice my opinion. I'm in favor of the petition which I signed to keep it as a preserve, because that land, I'm sure none of you have gone into that woods. At one time, we were able to take our dogs, cats, whatever, in there, because it wasn't roped off, and it doesn't seem to be inhabitable. I don't care what you're gonna do with it. There's hills. We remember... Forty-five years I'm there. We remember Georgette's Hill. My children slid down the hill. How... I just can't imagine how a structure for stories is going in that section. So, and also, do we know when the Melrose ordinance will be voted on?
Not us. That's between the council and you. And I don't know where the council's gonna get the money that it's worth.
Okay, but as a planning board, you... All of you...
Larry, do you know?
Yeah, I can respond to that. The Melrose ordinance is not on for tonight. There will be further discussions with Judge Natale when we go to court on August twenty-eighth about the future of Melrose, about Cross Avenue.
And I think you said that the planning board, it wasn't your obligation to know the road system or know how the traffic goes in and out. Did I hear that right?
No, that's not the case. We can't deny an application account of traffic.
Okay, but who...
If it's a permitted use, we can.
Was there any surveyors, like, taking pictures of how the traffic comes up the road, out of the road?
Before an application comes before us, they have to do an engineering...
Before an application comes before us, they have to do an engineering study, they have to do an environmental study, they have to do a traffic study. Now, the traffic study has to tell us whether their egress and egress...
And ingress.
Ingress fails or doesn't fail. I mean, I live on Harrison Street, right across from the Amboy-Madison Bank. It's a little narrow street, I live up on the top of the hill. I'm affected by all of the traffic, too. Everybody in town is. There's people that sat on this board that didn't want the Ernston Road extension, right? They didn't want the extension from, off of Deerfield Avenue, but that was part of the master plan. There's people that don't want the extension on River Road. And there's people that don't want the extension between Journey Mill Road and Cheesecake Road. But all of those are on the master plan so that we can try to make a little more movement in town in case one of the main arteries closes. But that's all we can do. We can put it on a master plan, and we can hope. The bypass roads, some of it's been built already. The builders that built the townhouses built it already. The people that built the generating plant down on River Road, they built a section of it. Hopefully someday we get that whole road built, and it'll take a lot of the truck traffic off. But until that happens, you know, that's another fight for another day. It's not like we've been sitting up here trying not to make things happen. You have to understand, we're constrained by certain things. If a piece of property is owned by somebody, and it's zoned properly, they're allowed to do it. Kaplan's been real good at using the courts to get what he's got. You can't blame us for that, you can blame him.
But Melrose and these others are not zoned for this type of building. You're trying to change the ordinance.
You're absolutely right, because we need to make that 700 number, you know? But before any of that happens, they have to come with real, concrete, engineering-proof, environmental-proof studies from traffic studies that make it, that the board can decide what we want to do. Just because we pass these ordinances today doesn't mean we're going to develop any of those spots, you know?
We don't pass them, by the way, I mean...
And the town...
Refer them to the council.
We refer them with comment, we like them, we don't like them, change this, change that. But ultimately, the power is with the Borough Council.
Because after 45 years of traveling down Cross Road to Oak, and I mean, it's in bad shape to begin with, Oak Street, your car just bumbles. It's just, it's unimaginable that 300 more cars are going to go down two roads. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. Anybody else that hasn't spoken? You're the last one, then. Oh, wait, wait, where? Have you spoken yet?
Who's the last one?
The lady right back there.
Oh, wait, if you can let the lady by the board sit, come on up.
She can speak.
My name is Sonal Patel, and I live off 26 Wisnewski Road. So my question is about Kaplan Site One of Main Street. So if you all decide to vote no, what happens? Kaplan doesn't build? It's still...
If the planning board doesn't recommend referral of the ordinances to the Borough Council, then what will happen is, at the end of August, I'll have to report back to Judge Natale and tell him what the outcome was. And my suspicion is that he will adopt the ordinances for us, and he will also appoint a special master to deal with the future implementation of the COA.
And then they could tell you, then they could tell you how many affordable units. And they can tell you where they're going to go.
Okay, and if they, so now they build, but do we have a choice? Like, you all have a choice to say, instead of that, maybe senior living or not affordable, low income, but go with veterans or one of the other options?
Well, no, I, first of all, one of the other speakers said, well, you know, why don't we just build all senior and all veterans' housing? You can't do that because there's something called the Fair Housing Act, which states that you cannot discriminate against families, against families with children. I mean, your recourse, everyone here feels the same way. We know that any development that ever gets built puts a strain on the school system and puts a strain on the infrastructure. But unfortunately, under the municipal land use law, a municipality cannot impose what are called developer impact fees, like you have in other states. In other states, for instance in Florida, developers have to build schools. They have to build intersection improvements because they allow developer impact fees. It's not allowed in New Jersey. So I guess your recourse is to lobby your state legislators and see if they'll change the law. They won't. It's been the law for a long time, that you can't impose those fees. And you can't even consider that for purposes of a land use application.
Okay, so pretty much from how it sounds, even if the voters know Kaplan kind of has their end of it...
We kind of lose control.
And then...
Whatever control we have is gone.
Okay, okay.
Things could be, as bad as it is now for you folks, it could be worse. Maybe it is, and maybe it is, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
That's in the dark hole.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Pat Bodak, H Cheyenne Drive. Quick question, when Kaplan protected its property off on North Ernston, did they protect it as it was zoned prime? Is that still, was that zoned prime?
No, because, all that gets thrown out when we're dealing with the COA litigation. So no, they protected the site, but the zoning is irrelevant for purposes of that.
So it's not zoned prime currently?
Well, no, they have two, they have two separate parcels there. One is zoned prime, and the other one is zoned residential.
So they can't build on the prime, right?
Well, no, one of the...
Unless it gets changed?
No, no, they can build on the prime because one of the zoning ordinances that's for consideration this evening is to change that zoning.
But you don't have to do that, correct?
We don't have to do...
Like Hail Mary Pass, you don't have to do it?
Again, ultimately, that decision rests with the Borough Council on the ordinances.
Okay.
Whether those ordinances are adopted and come into the law for the town, you know, we're just, on that issue, we're the referral agency. Can't hear me?
Okay.
Damn, I have such a big mouth. So what I said is, is that with respect to the ordinance, we're just a referral agency. We don't adopt them legally. The Borough Council has the authority and the power to do that. We just tell them we like it, we don't like it, add this, add this, or don't do that, don't do this. And they can take that into consideration, they can follow us, or they can not follow us. We're taking into consideration what our comments are after our public hearing.
True, okay, thank you. I thought it might be a Hail Mary Pass in there.
Last question. Have you spoken before?
Yeah.
All right, you're it, last question. State your name and address, please.
Hi, good evening, my name is Pinku Vohal. I live on Ten Page Terrace in Town Lake West. So my question is, I know Kaplan is going to build Camelot Two. Is there any way, like, that they have to build it specifically in Town Lake? Because right now, I know Camelot One, it's, with the building of Camelot One, it's already congested as it is. And if they build where they're planning on building Camelot Two, Main Street is kind of backed up as it is, and it's just going to get even more congested. So just any thoughts on if they had considered other locations where they can build it?
Well, you probably know the answer to that question, no?
I thought I asked, though.
All right, but again, and I know Mr. Rogoff said this a few times this evening. You know, when the application ultimately gets submitted to the planning board, they're going to have to submit a traffic study, they're going to have to submit an environmental study. If the traffic study doesn't pan out, they're not building there, all right? Or they're going to have to scale down the project. Now, I will tell you, you know, actually, I sat as planning board attorney here for a few years. I'm still the zoning board attorney in town, and I deal with traffic studies all the time. Yeah, they'll come up with a traffic study that works. That's just the nature of what traffic engineers do. But certainly, the town has the ability to scrutinize any traffic report. And, you know, nothing's a fait accompli in terms of, you know, the size of the development in any event.
Okay, because my concern is, like, right now, Town Lake itself feels congested with Camelot One, and just, you know, even driving into work in the morning, like, they never stop, even though there's a stop sign there. And I'm just, you know, wondering, once they build Camelot Two, Main Street is going to be so hard to get out of Main Street or just go anywhere.
Well, they'll have to come, they're going to have to deal with traffic on their site, and they're going to have to deal with traffic immediately adjacent to their site. So if there's an intersection, and it's, you know, and there's a requirement for a controlled intersection, and the county or the municipality requires them to do so, it'll have to be done.
So if that's the case, then they could potentially not build there, they, if traffic...
They're going to build there, okay? Again, it's, yes, if, first of all, I don't know what market conditions will be. I mean, that's going to dictate what's going to drive the engine here as well. But these are sites that likely will get built, yes.
Because I think a lot of us here that live on Town Lake, we're just kind of concerned because it feels like when we moved in, it wasn't, you know, it's open space, and, you know, we built homes, and for a lot of us, this is our first home that we built, and we weren't aware that there was going to be, like, apartment buildings built there. And now they're thinking about building a second set of apartment buildings. So it just seems really congested, and there's a lot of young kids that play around there. And, you know, there are safety measures, there's a lot of other things to consider. So I was just wondering if they feel that Main Street is going to be congested with traffic, if they could, if they might be forced to build somewhere else.
No, the answer's no.
They don't own any other, these are the sites that they have control of.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Jimmy, I'm going to let you speak shortly, and then we're going to have board comments, and then we're going to do this. Jim, come on up. Make it short, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm not sure I got an answer to my question about the land use element of the master plan. Here it is. This area in green is the area that is zoned prime. What you're doing is, when you amend the land use element, it's not in substantial compliance with this aspect. So if the council is going to act on this on the 21st of August, and you have two things that conflict, what's going to happen, is my question. And this, Mr. Leon Cavalllo, I got this from Pat last week. This is the current master plan. This green is the area here, and it's labeled P, not PRD or PD seven, P. So I know that you're amending, I guess, you're going to amend the housing element, but you're not amending this part. So how are you going to respond to that?
You brought it up.
Well, I think what's going to happen, Ms. Leon Cavalllo, is obviously you're going to amend the map based upon the adoption of these, or the recommendation on these ordinances to...
Well, amend the land use plan.
Yeah, exactly.
So is there going to be notice for that? Are you going to go through...
The notice was this evening, in fact, I read the notice before.
This is a different change.
It's, that's an exhibit that's attached, that's an exhibit, I don't know where you got that from, Jim, but the...
It's part of the land use element of the master plan.
Is that the blown up, is that blown up? The map was not that big?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably blown up.
From the 2013 master plan?
Some of us are old, Mr. Leon Cavalllo, so we...
Some of us are getting older, Mr. Robinson.
Pardon me?
Some of us are getting older, Mr. Robinson.
Okay. And while he's looking, I just wouldn't want people to be under the misimpression with respect to the question about prime, that zoning doesn't matter. What the board is doing is recommending a change in zoning. They're recommending that they change the zone from prime to residential, and the council...
That's what's in front of us.
Pardon me?
That's what is in front of us.
Yeah. I said, I didn't hear what you said, but I said yes, to be polite. But I don't want people to be under the misimpression that the zoning doesn't matter. You don't have to change this prime zone, and I wish that you didn't, and I think a lot of the speakers here wish that you didn't as well. But I do, I just do want it on the record that the land use element is conflicting with the housing element because, as you know, as we know from a couple suits, we have to dot our i's and cross our t's.
And we'll make sure that Ms. Leon Cavalllo dots his i's and crosses his t's and changes the zone designation on that piece of property.
Okay, and you don't think you need public hearing for that?
No, it was noticed this evening. I don't know why it's not in the plan here, but certainly it can be attached to it. It's just an exhibit, just an exhibit, Mr. Robinson.
I think it's the map, it's not an exhibit, it's the map.
Right.
I mean, it's what...
I agree.
Jimmy?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. I'd like to thank the public for all their input. Thank you very much for all showing up. We're going to have comment from the boards. Mr. Maginone, you seemed to want to go first.
I've been sitting here for three hours. I appreciate everybody's comments, and I share your frustration. I think I'm probably better off sitting over there than over here. I've been very frustrated. To me, it's ludicrous when you make a development, and I've said this before at planning board meetings, and my fellow board members can attest to it. It's ludicrous that you can't consider the impact on a community with traffic and school-aged children when somebody comes here to do a development. And I've been frustrated by that the whole time I'm here. I actually sat here and listened to a traffic study one time for a developer that did a traffic study on Washington Road at 2:00 in the afternoon. What value is that? You want to do a traffic study, do it at 8:00 in the morning. When you have school buses and that. And that's exactly what it says. You have these traffic studies, but they tailor them to make it what they wanted to make it. And we've always questioned it. I've kicked back fiscal impact statements from developers on towns that came with bad math and bad numbers, trying to make it look like it's not as impacted. A gentleman that was on Wisnewski Drive, I don't know if he's still here, that made the comment, and I agree 100%. We talked about Camelot, the apartments that are in Town Lake now, those luxury apartments. That area was originally supposed to be age-restricted, and that's what I approved, and that's what I voted on. And I feel for those people that went into that development, bought $650,000, $700,000 homes with the understanding that that was going to be age-restricted. And then the developers with all the money, run down to Trenton, throw their money around, and they come up with this conversion, and now that you can take that and you can make it market value. Very frustrating, I voted no on that, and that's why I don't want any houses there if it wasn't going to be age-restricted. Okay, I understand, and I feel for you. I do take exception to some of the comments that were made about, we don't care because we're not affected by that. If you live in a town this size, you're affected by all these types of decisions. If you travel on Washington Road and Main Street, you're impacted by that. And I'm frustrated from a planning perspective, when I come on the planning board, one of the first questions they ask, we built Washington Road with two lanes, but we put an elementary school, a middle school, a high school, a shopping center, a temple, all on these two-lane traffic. And the only bypass is another two-lane road on the other side of town. And not many interconnections between those. It's very frustrating from that perspective. I don't like the way Kaplan does business. He throws his money around, he goes down there, he gets politicians to side with him, and I think you all know, we live in one of the, in my opinion, a corrupt state politically that they can go down there and do that, and come here, and us be dictated by a judge on what we're going to build in a town in which we live. And that's been the most frustrating thing for me. So I share that frustration with you and understand it. And that's why, and I mentioned earlier, I can't support Ordinance 36617 to take these things and develop them and make them zoned into multifamily houses. I also sit on the Sayerville Board of Education, and I am equally frustrated with the impact that has on our school district. And I sit here, my hands tied because we have this big manual that we have to comply with that says you can't do impact on traffic, you can't take into consideration on school-aged children. And Mr. Sacks says, there are some states, and there are a lot of states, that put impact fees on developers that are going to come in and build these things. And they make them build schools. Here in New Jersey, you go down to Trenton, you understand why you can't do that here. So from that perspective, sitting here on the planning board, I feel for you. I live in this town, I've been here 22 years. I have kids in this town, and I understand everything you're saying, and I agree 100% with you. And I try to make the best decision I can with my hands being tied on what's best for the town and what we can do to keep out of litigation. And it's very frustrating, so. But I just, let it be what it be, let the powers be what it be. I'm not going to support 36617 because I take exception to a judge telling me what I got to build in the town. And that's because the legislators failed to do their job, the governor comes in, cancels COA, and then what are we supposed to do? With no guidance, just start building affordable housing that we may not need? So we had to make that decision, and at that time, we made the decision based on information we had at that time. Now, in hindsight, I wish I, look, if I could make all the decisions in my life, but hindsight, I'd be a very successful guy. I don't have the opportunity to do that, so. Thank you for listening to me.
Dennis, you want to say anything, Dennis?
Well, I will say that, well, like Mike said, I have a business in town on Washington Road, and I can't even get people in and out of my business because of the traffic on Washington Road. On the other hand, if I turn something down, and it goes to litigation, and it costs our township hundreds of thousands of dollars for legal fees, and we're going to get turned down anyway, because like you said, that builder's got a lot of pull, then I'm costing more money for the town in the long run. Your taxpayers, their monies, all your taxes are going to go up. You don't want to see them go up for the school system, but, you know, you're going to spend a lot more money, and you're going to get probably more people in there that you don't want. And a lot of times, our hands are tied. We can say no, yeah, we can be big shots and say no, but they're going to win, and it's going to cost us. gonna cost us in the long run. So you have to keep that in mind, when we make a decision, we're made the decision based on what's gonna be the best for the town, and if they're gonna get it anyway, we, best thing we could do is make it easier on the people in town and the tax dollars. So that's where, and I'm, I'm personally inflicted by the traffic on Washington Road, I have a business on Washington Road, and believe me, it's hard, I can't get customers in or out of the place during certain hours of the day, and I live right across the street from the school. I'm right across the street, I'm not down the road or around a block, I'm right there, so I see it.
Ms. O'Leary?
I side, I, I side with both of them, they're both great speakers, but I, I will vote to pass it, for the same reason Dennis said. I don't wanna cost the town more money in litigation fees, and, and ultimately, the people that are building are going to build anyway, I think the conflict comes in with affordable housing, and how many units are dedicated to each one of these specified areas, but, but ultimately, whether it's Mako or Kaplan, they, they own these parcels, and they are gonna build anyway, so I don't wanna be in litigation over it, and, and you're, you're not moving where these parcels are being built, many people are, they said they have no problems with the affordability, the housing affordability issues, it's just the building and the traffic, these things are gonna be built anyway, so, so I do support it.
Voice chairman?
Oh, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, it would, we'd like to see this at every meeting, not so much the discussion part, but to see people come in and be, be involved. All, too many times, we, we debate things, and we deliberate, and we go to public portion, and there's nobody here, okay? So I think this is an exercise in people caring, and, you know, economic, not economic, they're being good citizens, okay? So I thank you, and we are very sympathetic on the board to everything that goes on here, because we live here too, and we know the traffic, I lived in town for 63 years, and it's always been the same two-lane roads on Main Street, Washington Road, and now that the development throughout the decades has really increased, that it's just so tight, and especially down in the Ernston Road, the Washington Road area. At certain times, like in the morning, it's, it's horrendous with the schools, and the traffic, and it's just terrible, but I just wanna let you know that we really care about this, and we care about your opinions, but we're somewhat regulated by state law ordinances, and certain things we can do, and certain things we can't do, but just to let you know that we are on your side, we're here to represent you, but it, sometimes it doesn't seem that way, but we do, do try our best on that. So again, thank you all so much for coming out, and best wishes, thank you.
Ms. Lee?
But of course, and I as well thank everyone for being here, very interesting to hear your feedback, I know this is a difficult amount of information to take in, and understand and apply to how the decisions are made. I agree with everybody here, I would love to stop the building, I'm tired of seeing the town expand, but by law, if they own the land, and it's zoned for building, we can't stop that. So as we look at building the affordable housing, keep in mind, we can't tell them just to build affordable housing. Two things, no builder's gonna just build affordable housing, they're not going to make any money on it. Where do we wanna build segmented sections of affordable housing for poor people? That's not the goal, the goal is to assimilate everyone into the same community. So it becomes a mix of what's being built, and we have to accept that is the way it's done. If we don't build these houses, they will legally come in, and they'll tell us how to do it, and they'll probably tell us to build more houses. So we're trying to make the best decision to limit how many houses we have to build, and to also not let any outside government entities have control over the decisions for our borough. So as frustrating as this is, we often have to make decisions that don't seem like we care, but we're trying to make a decision that still has the best interest of the borough in heart.
Thank you. Danny, Mr. Velosen?
Frustration seems to be the magic word tonight. I'd love to see all those properties be declared open space, and the town be able to take over, but that's not a fact of life, they're owned by the developers, and they can be developed by the developers, and the courts are gonna let us, are telling us that they're gonna be developed by the developers. So basically, our hands are tied with that. I'm, myself, I'm a little frustrated sometimes with the master plan, with the traffic in town, with, when we try to get some of the bypass roads down on River Road, we get opposition from the, from the people. They don't wanna see that bypass road. However, it would help and take some of the traffic off of the, off of the streets. So again, I feel your frustration, I know where you're coming from, but basically, our hands are tied.
Councilman Limbo?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm also very frustrated with the, with the judge's ruling here with Kaplan, and yes, it does seem that Kaplan always gets what he wants. I'd have to ask our legal experts, would it be worthwhile, he was granted this, Kaplan was granted this 'cause they, the judge felt Savile was in need of affordable housing. Now that we are putting a plan together, would it be worthwhile to appeal this decision?
Well, there's no decision to appeal yet, I guess that, that, that could, 'cause we did settle the case, so there's nothing to appeal on that. The, the question is, what happens if the ordinances are not adopted, and the master plan is not adopted?
Or can we go back and reopen that agreement?
Well, the, no, the, well, we, we can't reopen it as to Kaplan. Kaplan was an intervenor, they are permitted to, to build on their properties, you know, and obviously, the number had to be achieved, which was 785, which, you know, which is the number that we came up with, you know, which is the number that the court came up with, and the number that the special master came up with, and we, we settled it at. There's really nothing to, we, we can't appeal the settlement, the, the settlement agreement can be modified, there, there is language in here that permits it to be modified, and I think, as I alluded to at the beginning, with the intervention of Savile Housing Authority and the redevelopment agency, some of those municipal properties potentially could be developed, River Road could potentially be developed, there's been some discussions about that.
Right, River Road would be a potential site for the, for the veterans preference housing.
Correct.
Which would give us a one-to-one.
Correct, correct, so, so the numbers can be reduced in, in that respect, and yes, in, that, that settlement agreement could be modified, 'cause we have control over those properties.
Okay, so those properties could even affect the Kaplan settlement?
No, it's not gonna affect the Kaplan number, Kaplan number is a number that's etched in stone, right, and...
It can, it can help lower the density.
The overall.
The overall density, correct.
Okay, well, we will continue to work with, with Savile and the Housing Authority, and the goal, on my end, the goal to be, to go with the veterans' preference housing, get the one-to-one, and reduce the density.
Ken, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, I'd like to thank everybody for the demeanor, most part, everybody got a fair shake at coming up to the mic and speaking, I hope everybody felt that way. In the beginning of this process, we started out with 1,309 units that we had to do, we got it down to 785, after much wangling, and, and Kaplan doing what he had to do before us, and sort of shoving it down our throat, so we saved 524 units. We haven't been doing anything, but that's what we did, that's the best we could come up with. I know a lot of people don't like things happening in their own neighborhood, it affects all of us, we've tried as a board to be nonpartisan, I think we've had, for the last 10 or 15 years, a very cohesive board. When I sat on the board, all of these properties that we're talking about, Patriots Hill, Town Lake, they were all condos. In 1989, we changed the master plan, the density in the pit was three times the amount that it was now, we got taken to court by all the builders, because we changed all the density. We prevailed on that, because we didn't spot zone. So we took all of those where Town Lake is, could've been three times the amount of homes already. Every time that we've thought we've done something good, they've gotten down to Trenton and done something to circumvent what we think is a good thing. I think this, this plan is by no means perfect, but I'd hate to see the judge get a hold of this and tell us that this is what we're gonna do. This is the only chance that we have, and I, I'm gonna make a motion, or I'm gonna ask for a motion to accept these two ordinances, and give them to the town council, and let them decide if it's the best. This is the best that the planning board has been able to do with their professionals, and at this point, I'd like to thank Mr. Sacks, Mr. Rogoff, Mr. Cornell, and Mr. Leon Cavalllo for a yeoman's job over the course of these times, and negotiations for what they've done in keeping this board and the town from the teeth of these developers. I've sat on this board for a number of years, Mr. Ocheski was on the board when I was on here, so was Mr. Robinson, and I'm still here. I happen to like doing this, because I like this town, this is where I grew up, this is where I spend my time. I could've moved out of town a couple of years ago when I retired, I decided not to, my wife still has one more year as a teacher, I understand all of the ramifications about everything, but if we don't act as responsible adults and pass these two things, then we give up our right to decide what we're gonna do, and that four, that, that number of 785 and the 524 units is out the door. So at this time, I'd like to make, have a motion to accept the ordinance of Savile Borough Middlesex County to supplement and amend Chapter 35 entitled Affordable Housing Ordinance to Implement the Savile Borough Housing Plan and the Element of Fair Share.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second, that.
Any question on the motion? If not, I'll take a roll call.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Limbo?
Yes, this is 36317, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Mr. Maginone?
In your words, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna be an irresponsible adult and say no.
That's okay.
Will we have a clarification on the number of the ordinance, please?
No, 36317.
No, 36617.
There's two ordinances, one...
No, no, there's two.
The one that you don't wanna vote on is 366.
But he can vote no on that one, too, if he wants, that's okay.
I will vote yes on the fair share plan. This is not the zoning change. I will vote no on 36617.
Well, let's do one at a time.
Which one are we doing?
We're doing 363-17.
Which is the fair share plan.
That's correct.
We'll vote yes on that.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Velosen?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
And the other one?
So 36317 is being forwarded to council with planning board's recommendations.
Yes.
And now we're doing 366-17, correct?
That's correct. An ordinance supplement and amendments of Article 3, Chapter 26, land development, the revisited general ordinance of the Borough of Savile to permit inclusionary multiple, multiple-family dwellings with the planned residential development in the, in this district option.
What's the number of this one?
Ordinance 36617.
Just for the record, those are the Kaplan ordinances.
These are the Kaplan ordinances.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Well, I think you gotta move it.
Huh?
Someone's gotta move it.
Yeah, I, I need a, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, get it on the floor.
I have a second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions under the, under the motion? If not, I'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Ca, Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Limbo?
No.
Mr. Maginone?
No.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Velosen?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, there's one other thing you have to consider tonight, you have to adopt the housing element plan.
Right, the next thing is to adopt the Savile Master Plan Housing Element and Fair Share Plan dated May 28, 2016, it's revised June 10, 2016, did I get all the numbers?
Yes.
Were there other revisions?
All right, so...
And subsequent revisions.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I need a motion to accept the Savile Master Plan Housing Element Fair Share.
It's just a report that John went over tonight.
Yes.
That's the adoption, yeah, that's, the motion is to adopt that.
And what was, the first one was the, the first vote on that ordinance was for this as well?
No.
Okay, that's a difference, all right, now I got you.
This is, we're just, we're just accepting the plan.
I got you.
Make a motion for adoption, Mr. Chairman.
You need a second? Second, I have a second, any questions? Take a roll call on the housing element and fair share plan?
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Limbo?
Yes.
Mr. Maginone?
No.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Velosen?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
So the two ordinances have been referred for approving to the municipal, to Borough Council, and the planning board has adopted the master plan amendments consisting of the housing element fair share plan.
That's it.
You concur with that?
I do concur, Mr. Rogoff.
Okay, before everybody leaves, before everybody leaves, Pat, I wanna discuss the Hercules LLC resolution.
Really?
Well, yeah, I do. Everybody got a copy of it? Has everybody acknowledged receiving a copy of the draft resolution approving the redevelopment area designation for the Hercules LLC site?
Yes.
I know you don't have it in your package, but if you reviewed it, we could still vote on it without it being in your package, because you got it from me by email, you've read it, you reviewed it, and we could presumably adopt that resolution this evening.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
Okay. My recommendation is, is we should, it was just, it wasn't on the agenda, was it?
It wasn't on the agenda, because it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
I, I, the next day, I, the facts are, the next day, I emailed it to Pat, I emailed it to the board.
When did you email it to the board?
It didn't get in your package.
When did you mail it to the board?
Probably the same day I sent it to Tom, I don't know what, it was that, probably the same day.
The day after our last meeting, Mike.
I sent a blast email to everybody.
Okay, that's, okay.
If you didn't get it, you didn't get it, that's fine.
Is there a rush to, we can't wait till next meeting, so we...
No, to answer the question, no, there's not a rush.
I'm trying to delay for another four minutes.
Is it time, I'm outta time? It's up to you, if you don't feel comfortable doing it, then don't do it.
It's up to the chairman, when it comes to me, I'll vote.
How does everybody feel? Everybody...
We all approved it.
We all approved it?
Okay, with it.
All right, I need a motion to...
I wasn't at the last two meetings.
Well, you can't, you can't vote.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, you don't have to.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
The vote on the...
Hercules.
The, um... Adoption of the res, of the Hercules LLC resolution declaring that to be an area Adoption of the Hercules LLC resolution declaring that to be in need of redevelopment.
And send that to the, all we're doing is sending that recommendation to the Borough Council.
Correct.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll have a roll call vote on that.
No, dang it.
Oh, aren't you named?
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee was not here, Mr. Limbo?
Yes.
Mr. Maganon?
I'm gonna abstain.
Ms. O'Leary was, Mr. Velosen was not here, Mr. Ty?
Yes.
How many?
Four. The other people weren't here.
Not a problem? Well... No, no, it's just the majority of those eligible to vote. You don't need five votes. Yeah, so it passes.
It passes. We'll send that, we'll send that up to the Borough Council.
Excuse me there, Mr. You guys testing me or what? It's late.
Any old business, new business, administration matters. Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Well, wait, 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 wait. Public portion, anybody wish to speak under public portion? Anybody wish to speak under public portion? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Call in favor? Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. See you next, our next meeting is...
August 16.
August 16.
Now we understand why the planning board is not a named defendant in the affordable housing litigation, because the suit is filed by the borough.
Okay.
It's called a declaratory judgment requesting immunity from builders remedies like Kaplan.
Right.
That's what brings it to court, so we're not a party. You following?
Okay. I'd like to thank the board for the...